The Harwich Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, July 25th. This is being obviously held in person. Thank you all for attending. It's also available as a live broadcast on Channel 18. Mass General Law requests that we inquire as to whether or not anybody intends to record this meeting. Is anybody going to record? No, thank you. So I'm calling this meeting to order and like to invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. We open this evening with a continued item, public hearing number, case number PB 2023-04. It's been continued from February 28th, April 11th, April 25th, May 9th, and June 27th. It's Karen and George Oliver of Oliver Homes LLC through their agent Kent Dushella have applied for a special permit for a two-family dwelling in order to build a second residential structure connected by a roof or a series of roofs. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-51N, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Property is located at 86 Mile Street, Assessor's Map 14, Parcel B9. Property is located in the residential low-density RL zoning district. Good evening, gentlemen. Caleb, could you mute what we have online? That'd be great, for the time being.
Good evening, members of the planning board. Again, for the record, my name is Charles Sabat, representing Oliver Homes LLC. And with me is Mr. Kent Dushella, who is a representative of the Oliver family. So I wanted to let you know at the outset that of the two matters that are before you that are in conjunction, the second matter, name of respect to the access when we reach that.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
Okay. Because what I'd like to do is bring that matter up right now at the same time, just so that we have a contiguous hearing. So that being said, this case, PB 2023-04, is being heard in conjunction with PB 2023-12, continued from, I just want to make sure we all have it on the record, April 11th, April 25th, May 9th, and June 27th. Karen and George Oliver of Oliver Homes LLC, through their agent Kent Dushella, have applied for a special permit for an alternate access driveway. Application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-18K, and Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Property is located at 86 Mile Street, Assessor's Map 14, Parcel B9. Property is located in the residential low-density RL zoning district. Thank you. Apologize for the interruption.
That's right. Understood. So what I was going to address with respect to that, so you're aware of it, is that when, with regard to that application, which is the 2023-12, we're going to be moving to withdraw that without prejudice. And we'll proceed tonight with 2023-04, which is the application for a two-family dwelling. So if I may just address that with you this evening, as you know, when we last addressed the substance of this matter, it was voted upon by the board to submit the questions that had been raised concerning this to Town Council. And Town Council has rendered an opinion. For the record of this appeal, we don't agree with a number of the conclusions in the opinion, but I only mention that so you know what our position is on some of those things. But obviously, you have to be guided by, I don't need to tell you, guided by your own council and by your own town attorney. The issue before, or one of the issues before, was that the opposition had contended that this current single-family dwelling is a pre-existing non-conforming structure, a position that we have disagreed with and continue to disagree with, and that as a consequence, it was necessary to refer this to the Zoning Board of Appeals to seek and obtain a separate special permit. And the one thing that did result, I think, from the letter from Town Council is that she did not seem to arrive at that conclusion. What she seems to be saying is that we would fall under the first section of the zoning bylaw, which addresses pre-existing non-conforming structures, which would then mean that that question would be referred to the Building Commissioner. And if we meet the criteria under that section of the bylaw, which is 325-54, parentheses, capital A, 1A, that we would then, depending upon your vote tonight, we would then be entitled to a building permit, or he may issue a building permit. Parenthetically, I think we would meet those specific criteria, but she says that's a call for the Building Commissioner to make. And she does say that here, in my opinion, it appears that if a special permit for the proposed use, which she underscores and highlights, as a two-family dwelling is approved, then Section 325-54A1A and subsection C apply, and the Building Commissioner must then determine if the proposed extension will conform to current setbacks and lot coverage of the RL district. And if it does, a building permit may be issued. And this is not for this evening, but I would, just again, parenthetically, by way of a footnote, I think the Building Commissioner would find that, because in fact, we do meet those criteria, those mentional criteria under that bylaw. So it appears as though, from this opinion, that she is advising that the board can proceed with the question of the use, namely as a two-family dwelling, which is what we are asking for. In terms of the definition, or whether the proposed structure itself meets the definition of a two-family, she indicates that that's, again, a determination for the Building Commissioner. And again, I think for the record, we disagree with that provision, but that nonetheless is how I interpret her opinion, that you don't need to reach that question tonight, that you would address, at least according to her letter, the question of the use. So with regard to that, again, with regard to the application concerning the use as a two-family dwelling, I know I presented our case a couple of months ago when I was here. I know Mr. Dushella has presented it. I don't want to overdo the presentation or repeat, but I would like to just recapitulate just very briefly, if I can.
Absolutely.
On where we are with this. And the section of the bylaw, again, is 325-51, and it's subsection N, which applies to a two-family dwelling. And that provides that a special permit may be granted upon a determination by the Planning Board that the following additional criteria have been met. And number one is the lot area must contain a minimum of 40,000 square feet of contiguous upland in all applicable zoning districts, and we meet that. We exceed the 40,000 square feet. Second, the floor area of each dwelling unit shall be a minimum of 800 square feet, which we also conform to. Thirdly, there must be a common roof or a series of roofs that connect the dwelling units. And of course, our position is that we meet that criteria. There is a series of roofs that connect the dwelling units. And I think that would be subject, again, based on her opinion, the Town Council's opinion, to the determination by the Building Commissioner, but we would submit that we meet that criteria. And fourth, there shall be two off-street parking spaces per each unit, and there is sufficient space in the existing driveway and on-site for the provision for two parking spaces per each unit. Under the special permit provision, for all special permits, the very first subsection, which is 325-51A, one of the determinations that you must make is whether or not the develop, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Secondly, whether the specific site is an appropriate location for such a used structure or condition. Thirdly, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard. And fourth, D, adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the proposed use. And they point to, as an example, this includes appropriate sewage treatment facilities. So with respect to the first three questions, which is whether it will adversely affect the neighborhood and whether it's an appropriate location, if you recall, when I was here last time, I presented a chart that we had developed from properties that immediately surround this lot, which is 86 Mile Street. And we were able to show, I think, on that chart, that to begin with all of those lots, 86 Mile Street itself is the largest lot in terms of area. It exceeds an acre. In the immediate area on Mile Street, there's only one that even comes close, which is 72 Mile Street, which is .57 tenths of an acre. Using that chart, which was based on assessor's records, all of the lots that we showed in the Grassy Pond area, which is directly behind this lot, 86, the average lot coverage was some 15 and 1/2 percent, 15.45 percent of lot coverage. The average on Mile Street, at least, those are the ones that are immediately adjacent to it and across from it, the average was 12.56 percent. And based on the, 86 Mile Street comes in at, with the proposed development, a coverage of 11.86 percent. But I think I mentioned that, I qualify that because I think the assessor's record is slightly off of what the actual dimension is. And so in reality, I think we're probably maybe slightly more than the 12.56 percent. But we're certainly less than what we find in Grassy Pond. We're certainly consistent with everything that's in the immediate area of our site, 86, on Mile Street, in terms of lot coverage, again, even with the proposed second dwelling. The second dwelling will be a three-bedroom dwelling, and it, the septic system is sized for three bedrooms and actually for two additional bedrooms, so it's oversized for the proposed use. So we meet that part of the bylaw that talks about having adequate facilities on-site. In terms of the other issues with respect to this site, again, by definition, this is a residential use that is certainly consistent with the area, with the neighborhood. This is a residentially zoned area. This is not a situation where, under a special permit provision, an applicant might be proposing an expansion of a commercial use, or the introduction of a commercial use, or the introduction of some other use that might be a departure from what is permitted or otherwise permitted in the district, or what is common in the district. This is a case in which we are proposing, yes, a two-family dwelling, but one, a two-family dwelling can be permitted in this district, and secondly, it is residential, not an intense or intensified commercial use. I think we presented, or Mr. Dushella presented, that the intention here is that this would be used by a family member, and that's what the intention of this is. The single-family home is used by the Oliver family. It's not rented out. It's not an Airbnb. It's none of those things. They use it themselves, and they intend to use this additional dwelling unit for their, for members of their family, should they receive the permit. There are not going to be a rental or anything of that nature. And in that sense, again, almost by definition, noise, congestion on the site would be controlled because they themselves will be residing there. I would submit to you that this is not going to result in an increase in traffic by any means. Again, as we might find under other types of special permit applications where there's, again, a departure from what is otherwise existing in the district, where you might have a commercial use that's going to result in increased traffic, customers, truck traffic, and so on. That's not going to be the case here. It's going to be strictly passenger vehicles, and it's going to be residents on-site. There will be no nuisances or hazards that will be created by this particular use. I would point out that the rear lot line, along the rear lot line is the golf course, and so there are no neighbors there who are going to be impacted by this as direct abutters. On one side of the project, where the two-family dwelling will be located, on one side of that project, which I think is the easterly side, if I'm reading this correctly, there are a line of trees. There are some very tall trees that have been planted by my clients, some pre-existing vegetation, which screens this two-family structure from any of the neighbors on the east. And particularly, obviously, in the summertime, when the growth tends to be more verdant than it is in the off-season, which is when this structure will be used, again, the screening will help to suppress any noise of which there will be, I would submit, no more than there is customarily in a residential dwelling. It certainly will suppress any visual impact. On the westerly side of the site, it would be almost impossible to see this two-family dwelling because it's on the other side of the lot. It's obscured by the existing dwelling. There's a swing pool out there that has plantings and a fence and improvements around it. So again, it's going to obscure this second dwelling. I pointed out also that on Mile Street, we were able to identify at least three other homes that have accessory units of some kind that are probably pre-existing or predate the current zoning bylaw, but nonetheless are, have bedrooms. One of them, I think, has bathrooms in it. There's another one that seems to have another room in it. So this is not an aberration. This is not the first project in this area that, or the first development in this area that would consist of two dwellings or two structures. So it's consistent in that sense of the word. So, and again, we meet the lot coverage with the two dwellings. We're slightly beneath the required lot coverage. And all in all, we would submit that the impact of this additional dwelling unit, once completed, will have virtually no to minimal impact on the neighborhood. And so for all of those reasons, I would ask the board to find that we, that the applicant meets the criteria of subsection N, and that we've satisfied the conditions of approval that are set forth in subsection, in Section 325-51A. And I would ask you to vote favorably on our application. And we're available, obviously, for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Sabat. Shayla, did we have any other input from the town that we would want to discuss at this time, including and/or the council's note, letter?
You have that.
Yeah, I know. But is there anything else that we need to put in the mix? Any questions from the ward for Mr. Sabat? Please, Craig.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. You mentioned that this dwelling is intended for use by the family, and I think it was mentioned before, a disabled member of the family.
Right.
So the house is being built to be ADA compliant. I think you had testified, or Mr. Dushella. What if family needs change, if this permit were granted and we're five years down the road and the family needs change? What's to prevent this from becoming a BRB?
Well, I suppose the answer to that is, there really isn't anything that I know of, unless there is a bylaw or regulation in the Town of Harwich that I'm not aware of that controls Airbnbs or bed and breakfasts. So holding that aside, I would say that, no, one, the use could change, but it would have to be a use that is residential. First of all, it couldn't, obviously, couldn't be any kind of a commercial use. Couldn't have an art gallery there. You couldn't have any kind of retail use. I'm not even sure you could have a professional office use there without some further relief. So it will still be a residential use, but in terms of rentals, I'm not aware of anything, unless, again, there's a separate bylaw or regulation that I'm just not aware of that might prohibit that from happening. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Yes, please.
With you not pursuing the alternate access, are any of the plans changing? I see a garage here and, you know, how it had been made out. Would any of these plans change?
The configuration of the structures is going to remain the same, and so, no, we're not, we're not going to be changing that. And to be very open about my, our feelings about the driveway, the alternate access, I think I mentioned last time, when I was here, when I was addressing that, I, was my feeling that that bylaw is intended where an applicant or property owner is not using the legal frontage, and where they're seeking, and I interpret alternate to mean something other than the use of the legal frontage, not additional. I'm not sure that the town attorney agrees with me on that. I didn't see that in the letter, but she went far in opining that we would not meet the criteria of the bylaw, so I don't want to challenge that at this point. We will be, the driveway at a minimum, so we're all clear about this, will be used, I think, will be open during construction. We have a curb cut permit from the DPW for that. So for construction, yes, so certainly on a temporary basis, and then I think after construction is completed, we'll have to make. I think it's going to be used during construction. Am I not mistaken about that? As an access for construction vehicles. After that, I think that the owners will have to make a determination whether they want to continue to have the driveway, in which case then, the Building Commissioner may issue some kind of an order, and we'll then have to deal with it. We'll either have to agree with him or disagree with him, or we may, or the owner may just close it down. So at this point, the only thing I can say with some definitiveness is that at least the plan now is certainly to use it on a temporary basis for construction, and whether it will be used after that, we're not really sure, but we may. And then, of course, it's going to be an issue with the Building Commissioner at that point, how he interprets the bylaw.
Mary, do we have a prerogative involved here to get the Building Commissioner's input?
If he's here, you can ask him.
He added an additional page. Did you see?
I'm not sure if I did see that.
Does it have a green paper with it? That was the one that had the green. Karen was here.
Oh, I didn't see it. Okay.
Your free tissue paper with that, first one. That's not it. This is the one that was.
That's about stone marks.
Yep.
Yeah, that's stone marks.
Oh, this is about stone marks. Okay, never mind. So no. Okay.
Is Jack home?
Nope, he's not.
My question is whether or not he should be rendering a response to Town Council before we proceed.
So that's the board's decision, whether you feel you have enough information to move forward or not. I mean, I can't give you a ruling.
Right.
It's not my role.
No, but I'm saying to you, I mean, this is my concern, is that, you know, without kind of statement, a position statement.
So my understanding from reading the KP Law letter.
Right.
Is that the board can render a decision, and then if the board renders a decision to allow the special permit.
Right.
Then the Building Commissioner has the second role in piping in going forward.
Right.
That doesn't mean you have to render your decision tonight. If you're, if you feel you need more information, then that's the board's prerogative, as long as, you know, the applicant's willing to, you know, to continue to update so that you can get an answer if there are questions.
And did you have a question?
I just had a follow-up on Emily's question. So considering this is our sixth meeting on this property, and it's quite contentious with the neighbors and everything else. So Emily's question was about the plan that includes a garage in the second house, in the second dwelling, correct? So, and then that led to the driveway for such, right? So it sounded like the driver would come back in front of us at some point in time. But is there a consideration that you take away that garage, perhaps?
Garage, it doesn't have to be used as a garage.
I understand, but it's laid out here as a garage with an access.
Right.
Okay? And we have quite a full crowd of people who object to also, and that may be something you want to consider as a concession to the neighborhood, correct? And I understand it can be storage or something else.
We're making a concession with no driveway.
Well, you may come back.
You have no driveway, you have no garage.
Well, but you may come back on that because you withdrew with prejudice.
Let me see if I can answer this way.
Yes.
I didn't really recognize or consider the garage in that question, but that's, so let me see if I can.
That's the clarification.
I think what, whether there's a garage there or not, we can still access, if we had to close off that driveway.
Right.
If after construction, the owner determines, I don't want to have any, I don't want to have that driveway, we can still, you know, residents can still park in the front areas of, there's enough room there for them to do that, and they access it on foot through the, on the existing site to get to the dwelling. In terms of the, for point, if we don't have the driveway, we can't use it as a garage for a vehicle, certainly. Could be used as storage for bicycles or whatever it may be, but pool equipment, whatever it might be, but certainly can't use it for a vehicle.
Right. It's just in the drawing that we have in front of us now, it looks like a garage with the driveway, that at this point, we are not considering. So that was the, I'm trying to figure out, where is the point of concession with a full room of neighbors? And is this maybe one?
Right.
Okay?
And I would need to talk with my client if we were going to make a change of that nature in the structure.
Right, because there's consideration about what happens if this doesn't, if use changes over time to something else, which we've already handled. So that's just my addition to the conversation.
Thank you. Carrie, any questions?
I'm okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I don't want to beat a dead horse on the alternate access. I understand you've withdrawn that. So is there any intention to extend the driveway off of Mile Street around to the proposed structure so that they could use the driveway?
All of those are options that are available to us to resolve.
So.
Once we know, we can get a structure. I can't tell you, I mean, legally, you can have, not have the alternate access and have a driveway there.
Right, that's what I was asking.
Have access to the space on that from off of Mile Street.
So.
That's why we're withdrawing at this point in time, the alternate access.
Right. And following on Emily's question, that change, you're going to leave the garage on here so there's no change to the site plan in terms of change to the drawing that we're looking at? Okay. Thank you.
I could, if I could just add.
Please.
Wouldn't it solve a lot of problems to do exactly what we were just talking about and put the garage on the other side of the house?
I suppose it could be done. I don't know what the layout, I'd have to look at the layout. I see that on the other side, it would require some redesign, but obviously.
It aligns on a piece of paper.
Right, no, I understand.
So far.
Right. It's a lot less expensive to change the lines on the paper.
Bust up concrete.
Than it is on-site. I understand that. So again, I, I would need, we would need to, if, if I, if that was something that would be critical to a decision, then I would obviously, I'd need some time to confer with my client about that. About a redesign or reconfiguration.
Well, it just appears that, you know, the, the objections we've heard were for, from the residents of Grassy Pond Road, that there would be added traffic, safety issues, et cetera. And if you're, for the time being, canceling the driveway on Grassy Pond Road, I would think that all of those objections would go away if there was, you know, a little connector between the, the circle out in front of the existing house and garage flipped to the other side of the house and, you know, a little bit of pavement between the two. And then there's no additional traffic on Grassy Pond Road and no noise and whatever, you know, whatever the other issues are would, I think, would go away. I could be wrong about that, but it seems to me like they'd go away and that would, you know, solve a big problem for you.
Okay, again, if, if, if that's, if that becomes, if I sense that that's a critical tipping point, if you will, in terms of approval or the review of this, this application, then I would want to be able to talk to my client about that. Need some, I would need some time to do that.
Well, I don't know that this board would impose that on you or could impose that on you, but I'm just suggesting that if I was faced with this problem, I would, that's how I'd solve it. Just an idea.
Mary, appreciate it.
So I guess my question is following up on Harry's. I'm not a voting member on the, on this hearing because I had missed one of the hearings. I guess my question for you is would it make sense to review that with your client? And also give you an opportunity to kind of discuss with the building commissioner what his thoughts are on the, on the second half? Because if, you know, if we render a decision, then you're, then you're forced with either appealing a decision or, or stuck with it versus a continuance to a, to another meeting to have that opportunity to have those two discussions and then be able to come back to the remainder of the board more fully informed.
When you say the second half, you mean in terms of the driveway or?
As far, no, as far as the building commissioner's decision as to whether you would meet the criteria on the, under the first part for, for. Right.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
Right, and we, and obviously we, we, you know, we, I, I think that might be helpful. We would, and I'm not trying to be contentious or, you know, we, we.
No, and I'm, I'm just raising, I'm just raising the point, you know.
We're not looking to make appellate history in this case. But, you know, if.
I, I'm just recognizing you're not the only one that, that could appeal a decision. It could also be the neighbors who could appeal a decision and then you're, then you're down that path.
Right. As much as I like my name in lights on an appeals court decision, we'd like to get a, you know, a resolution. But, you know, obvi, obviously we'd, we'd have that in our back pocket, you know, depending upon what he ruled. But that could be helpful, I suppose, to speak with him in advance.
Is that something, our, our next meeting is August 8th, correct?
I gave you some.
Yep.
Agenda. As that sits now.
Is that something you want to entertain?
Sorry?
Is that something you want to entertain coming back to us on the 8th? With that, those two discussions already under your belt with your client and with the building commissioner?
Why, hasn't the building commissioner already written a letter? She's at the beginning of this, making comments. I haven't seen it. I don't know if he did.
However, I think what everybody's talking about is his response to what council has said.
Correct.
Right, I don't think you've had a response to council's, to council's opinion. I, and, and I don't know why that is, but I don't think.
That was my opening thing here. It's a trap door. It's just, again, it's.
Right, I, I hadn't seen that letter, but I wasn't worried.
I don't think we, we didn't get one on, on, we did not get a more recent letter on this matter. We received a letter from him on the Stone Horse matter. So I think that was the discussion that we had earlier. That was the confusion. Shayla was directing us to a, a letter on the Stone Horse matter, which obviously is a similar matter entirely.
It just started out saying it can't be.
Right. Right.
I'm not going to say that that's kind of the way it is.
Yep. A shot, okay. See, to the commissioner. I think we will, again, without making any commitments, so I don't want to, you know, mislead anyone that we know. But certainly would give us an opportunity. We will talk with our client.
Right.
We will talk with the building commissioner and see if we can't resolve something. So that we.
Yes.
Well, so what we need to do is, you know, when sometimes we can't stop that. So we're just going to take a pause here until Craig comes back because we're going to have to take a motion, so.
So in two weeks, we can still say now we don't want to have the alternative. If we get available.
Just have to hold on for a second. We had a member had to leave the room for bio emergency. Sorry, I'll move this up.
So if on the, over the next two weeks, we have to talk to the director of the building commissioner. And he says, I see nothing wrong with this. I see nothing wrong with this.
We may be okay.
By what we said earlier about playing without any, we don't need to say it's, it's still on the table.
Okay.
Until we talk to the commissioner.
Wait, wait for.
Great, thanks. Just a second. Did look urgent, so. All right, well, you're right, in the future, okay, yeah. I would have like a heads up, but it was a turned chair.
Procedural matter.
Yep.
Chairman, if this is an extended pause, should we either go off the record or basically pause the meeting?
Well, I think we're just kind of in a holding pattern right now. Hopefully it'll be a matter of seconds, so I hear some index of future movement. I suspect for past movement, motions, whatever.
You know, I think. See. See what George says.
So now that we're a full board again, I would like to entertain a motion for continuance.
I would, I would just have, have council repeat what he said when, that I believe your, your statement that you weren't making any commitments, but you would take the opportunity.
Correct, but I am, but I do appreciate the opportunity. I didn't want to commit to one, to anything or to, you know, mislead you to think that we will. But on the other hand, we definitely would like the opportunity, appreciate the opportunity. We'll talk to our client, we'll talk with the building commissioner. And I, and I would like to postpone both, keep my options open, both of the matters before you, before you vote on a withdrawal on the second.
Okay, so, so, so we're not going to do a withdrawal on the second? Right now, we'll just have a continuance of both, right?
Continue both to August 8th, if you would.
Okay.
Thank you.
So could I have a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you. My apologies for stepping out. Hopefully I didn't miss this, but is there a plan or can, when you come back to us, is there a plan for assuming you continue to want to withdraw the, the alternate access?
Most likely, yes.
How that's, how the curb cut is going to be restored to natural vegetation and so on and so forth? So there's not, you know, if it comes to that.
If we, if we go that route, in other words, if we, if we committed to abandoning it, then, you know, yes, we would, you know, be happy to present a plan if we. But I'm trying to leave our options open and be, and be honest with you that, that it, there is a likelihood that we could, i- i- if we were granted a permit and if the configuration may be the same, there is a likelihood that we might then try to, to keep the driveway open. And it would depend upon the building commissioner at that point. And then there would be a question of, would we, would we adhere to his order if, if it came to that? If he disagreed with us, he issued an order to cease and desist, would we adhere to that? Would we appeal it? But that's one of the things we're going to discuss with him at the outset. That'll affect our judgment on that. Thank you.
Excellent.
Just a comment, since we've been at this since February, we've had six meetings. We've had full participation from the community. I just would urge you to take that into consideration in coming to a, a medium ground somewhere where, you know, Harry's idea of switching the garage, taking the pressure off of Grassy Pond, because I don't think anybody here wants to go to another six meetings on this as well.
And I, and I appreciate that, and you're absolutely correct. It's been, it's, it's gone for a long time, but remember.
But the neighbors have risen, they had some concerns. They're still showing up. Our job is to listen to the public and to respond. We're trying to give, what are the concessions that come to some kind of conclusion? Because I think six more meetings on this, we would all go under, literally and figuratively.
Okay.
Okay? So I understand you're keeping your options open, but it would be great if you could look at this from the perspective of the community as well.
Neighbors.
And just with all due respect to, to everyone, that's part of the reason behind the suggestion for a continuance.
Exactly.
Because more than that ends up with, with a withdrawal and a new application and then you're starting from scratch. And I don't think anybody wants that, so.
Exactly.
So I think the, the slight postponement.
I think we want to bring this to conclusion as much as anybody does.
But, so my request for a motion stands.
I think you have somebody from the public that doesn't need to speak.
Okay, well, the, I, I would like to limit public discussion this evening to novel statements. We have scores of, of written and email communication. We have hours of testimony before this board. If you have something novel, according to what we're looking at this evening, I would enjoy it. I will entertain it, but I'm not, we're not going to take a grievance session or a struggle session tonight because there are just too many pieces on the table. So if you are going to have a novel piece, please stand to the podium, give us your name and your address.
Good evening. My name's Victoria Dalmas. I'm, I represent a number of the abutters and I'm from Sunny and Associates, 15 Cape Lane, Brewster. I, I do have some comments about substance, but my big concern is town council's opinion included a fact regarding a pre-existing cottage in addition to the original single-family residence at the property. That is not a correct fact. And I'm concerned that if town council doesn't revisit that opinion, that, you know, we've got an issue here. Because I think it does make a significant difference. The non-conforming section that has been referenced, again, is an extension or an alteration of a single or two-family residential structure. This is a conversion of a single-family structure to two-single-family structures. So technically it doesn't fall within that. And that's why it's relevant to maybe town council revisiting based on the affidavit that I submitted of the children of the prior owner. The other basis I was concerned about relates to the determination of whether or not what's proposed is indeed a two-family dwelling. In order to grant this permit, you need to be comfortable that, you'll, you need to make a finding that this is a single building and a single structure. And that's going back to those definitions of dwelling to family, which specifically references a building, and the definition of building, which specifically references a structure. And when I look at the A3 foundation plans that were included, which were oddly labeled proposed garage, I see a distinct foundation for the new single-family residence. In other words, there's a separate foundation for each residential building, separated by three other structures, a pavilion interposed by two covered walkways, and with a distance of those two separate residential foundations of approximately 45 feet. I find it challenging to characterize this as a building or a structure. It's two buildings with three interposed structures. It's a fiction to qualify this as a dwelling to family. And I would urge you that you revisit with council based on those definitions. I do appreciate the initial withdrawal without prejudice, which now seems to be reversed. I know my clients would like to see that driveway put back in its original state. So I appreciate that, that query that came from one of the members. And they wish that all access ceases. The bylaw is very clear, in the absence of an alternative access special permit, all access, all access shall be by the legal frontage. The temporary gracious grant of access, which I understand was solely based on a pool, has morphed into something much greater. And I do believe that DPW's temporary access is in violation of zoning. So with that said, I thank you for giving me the additional time, but I do, I think the key thing is I would very much appreciate if the board could perhaps share with town council that additional letter that I submitted with the affidavit to see if she might revisit her opinion if, if it needs any amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dalmas. Appreciate your input here. And I apologize for my coughing here. Anybody else from the public who stood up? Please step right up.
Kathy, I live at 37 Grassy Pond Road. I've owned the property since 1975. I appreciate that the applicant is withdrawing without prejudice the additional roadway request permit. However, I request that the highway department be obliged to rescind the permit granted improperly in 2022 and the applicant be required by the town to remove the dirt roadway and revegetate the area to its prior condition. I ask this not just on the basis of safety, and I won't take the time now for your request to repeat the issues about safety, although I have a census of the 34 children that live in our neighborhood and visit and some notes on that. I'm concerned about compliance going forward with whatever is approved. In February 2022, Oliver Holmes understood that a special permit was required by zoning law 32518K for any alternative access approval under any circumstance, pool or construction otherwise. Oliver, not only from general real estate development experience in Harwich, but also from specific prior permitting practice. I refer you to the town record for Old Colony Road, Harwich, Alternative Access Road, granted in 2013 by special permit to Oliver Holmes. This confirms that Oliver Holmes understood full well that it had an affirmative obligation under S32518 to seek a special permit for alternative access on to Grassy Pond Road and did not do so. In February 2023, when Oliver Holmes submitted a special permit to build a dwelling at 86 Miles Street from frontage onto Grassy Pond Road, the alternative access from Grassy Pond Road was referred to in the application as the existing driveway. Oliver Holmes' attorney has attributed this reference to the building engineer's notes. That may be so, but the applicant chose to leave them in the application without explanation. Were they hoping that the planning board would not notice that the existing driveway had not been properly permitted in the first place? Again, no special permit application for an access roadway was submitted in February 2023 until the planning office required, required it after 21 letters of vigorous objection to the roadway were received by the planning board. This case should be decided on fair application of zoning laws and not on personalities and attitudes. At the same time, the planning board's job includes making a risk assessment of the likelihood of full compliance. of full compliance going forward with all requirements of any permits approved. In that regard, this furtive practice demonstrated by the applicant clearly to sidestep zoning requirements should be noted. Trust matters. Lastly, outreach to the abutters, and this is novel. We, the neighbors, are disappointed that it has not only been an absence of any outreach to the neighborhood on the part of Oliver Holmes, but also the presence of some disregard for the neighborhood. Last summer, I wrote to George Oliver, the owner of 86 Mile Street, introducing myself and asking to meet him. It was a very polite and neighborly letter. I received neither acknowledgement nor reply and confirmed that it was received. I am leaving copies for the board members so you can each read for yourselves the positive content and respectful tone of the letter rather than to take the time to read it. In addition, Oliver Holmes representatives sent a clear and direct message to all of the abutters in the text of the 2023 application for special permit for the road, access road, by saying in reference to the access road, quote, "The neighbors need to share. We need to learn to share. We're not obligated to share anything with anyone when it's to our detriment. That's why towns have zoning laws to protect abutting neighbors with potentially harmful impacts to the safety, quietude, and character of a residential community." I invite you to reread before the next meeting the full text of the 2023 special permit application for a firsthand understanding of the owners and developers' public outreach posture towards the Grassipon Mile Street neighborhood. When Grassipon became a public road in 1960, the property at 86 Mile Street may have gained standing as an abutter to a public right-of-way. Such standing did not confer to Oliver Holmes any right in 2022 to attempt to gain access to this public right-of-way surreptitiously in contravention of zoning requirements. Having standing as an abutter to a public right-of-way does not grant any party entitlement, only standing to make a proper request to exercise a right-of-way pending town review, and in no case develop property out of compliance with zoning requirements for special permits. New construction for alternative access roadways and dwellings must not impact the abutting neighborhood negatively. Respect on the part of owners and developers, not only for zoning laws, but also for residential development's impact on neighborhood matters. The neighbors on Grassipon Road and Mile Street are not cliquey, angry, or difficult people. We're just ordinary Harwich homeowners and taxpayers seeking to protect, seeking to protect our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Saw somebody in the back row.
Kathleen said the nice part. Let me say the part that everybody's thinking. We're being played here. These guys are sitting here wanting to extend it out.
Please give us your name and your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tom Simpson, 41 Grassipon. We're being played here. They keep extending out, extending out, extending out, hoping that we're going to go away. We're not going to go away. And we appreciate the fact that you guys are asking good questions. But they're playing us. This is a game of let's keep going and going and going. Okay, we want to eliminate the road right now, and we'll come back to it later. In other words, they want us to agree to the house, and then they want us to come back and say, well, the house is there, the garage is there, you know, the road is there. We're there. What about the damage that has been done? We've got an arborist came in, one of the big oak trees. Because of the way they cut in to do the road, we're losing that tree. They turned around and they had the light company move the cable supporting the telephone pole. The pole is now tipped like this. Eh, it's not going to be in the next year or two, but eventually Storm's going to take that down because they eliminated the support. You've got a neighbor that his property gets flooded out every time we have a heavy rain. Their lawyer in the last meeting said, oh, in his opinion, that's runoff coming off of the street. Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I do have two engineering degrees, and when the outcome changes and you only change one variable, you can bet the variable made the change. And that's what's happening. Go there on a downpour, and you see it coming down, the hard pack that they put in. If we're going to do anything, we need to shut down that road once and for all, not with prejudice, just shut it down. Let us get back to normal life. This leaving it open while they do construction, we had that all last year. We're going to do it again this year. They're parking trucks up and down there. We got to weave around them. It's time that we do something. And I appreciate the fact that I think you guys have all caught on. There were some excellent questions that came out. And the other thing is, it's for the family, and they put in a letter. Your point was right on target. What happens next year when something changes in the family? We've spent a lot of money on this asset. We got to get a return on our asset. And all of a sudden, we're an Airbnb. Do a destination wedding there, and we're going to have cars up and down Grassipon, Mile Street. That's what it's going to turn into. On Grassipon, I've been there 14 years. In 14 years, out of 17 houses, there've been 10 changes due to death, due to illness, and a couple of relocations. But you don't know what's going to change. And all of a sudden, you build this 6,500-square-foot behemoth in the middle of 1,700-square-foot housing development. And the next planning board is going to be saying, who approved this? These guys want to subdivide the lot. They want to do this, they want to do that. This is going to go on and on and on. Somewhere, somebody's got to drive a stake. Thank you for letting me have the time.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Anybody else, please?
Hi. Tyler Kate Burton, 98 Mile Street. I'll be really quick. Thank you for your time. My kids learned to ride their bikes on Grassipon. We had the kids taking their training wheels off at a neighbor's house this week, and the landscapers are using that driveway, and they are backing trucks out of the driveway with not small trailers, large trailers. They can't see. They're blindly backing into Grassipon. There's no place to turn around with the driveway that they've made, and there's an immediate safety issue. And the flooding's real. Also, in terms of the trees, when they built that house, they took down an acre worth of 100-year-old trees. And when they build that 3,000-square-foot, two-story house, that will be the view from my backyard. I will no longer see the skyline. I used to see the beautiful trees, but I won't even see the skyline. I'll be in a densely populated neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Burton.
Hi, my name is Kater Pendergast. I live at 4 Grassipon Road. We've lived there since 1992. I just want to add to the record because I'm not sure it's completely clear what the safety issues are with this driveway. And the prospect that that driveway is going to continue to be used is frightening, given the perpendicular nature of that driveway to the driveway adjacent at 38 Grassipon Road. I'm not sure that's clear to this board, and so I'm going to ask my husband to bring those forward. So you can see that the, the orange, the section colored in orange is 38 Grassipon Road. The red is the proposed or the driveway that they've shoved in there, I think improperly. But you can see, you will be able to see that we're going to have an accident, no question about it, or we're going to have a death because the kids are running, Grassipon Road is a, is a cul-de-sac. People come around it all the time. The prospect there's going to be more construction vehicles is frightening. I would also like to make one other point and note that the planning board director in April noted that there's enough space to build a driveway connection from Mile Street to the proposed second home, or to build a connection between the existing driveway leading to the second home. So the possibility, which you've noted here tonight, and I do much appreciate the comments from many of you, that moving that, that garage to the other side of the house is a very viable solution that would make so much of this go away. Thank you for your help.
Good evening. My name is Alan Witty, and this is Pam, and we live at 38 Grassipon Road. And we are extremely, extremely concerned about the safety of Grassipon Road. For years, people walk Grassipon Road. Children ride their tricycles and bicycles. There's no sidewalk. It's safe. If you stand at one end of a street, you can see every driveway and every car on every street. There's nothing that you can't see, or there wasn't.
I think it was important, we had some pictures developed, and I think it was important to show what we've been talking about. This is the pre, this is before the road was carved, the alternate access road was carved out. I think we can see it was landscaped lovely, fit into the neighborhood, lots of trees, lots, lots of, some trees and some mulch. This is the post, as we have mentioned, okay? End of our driveway. What we see here is a big puddle after a rainstorm, okay? And again, we don't want to take your time, but we want to just make it so you can understand.
This is coming up, a picture coming up Grassipon Road from 26. A golf course is along this side. As you can see, three seasons a year, there's growth and a lot of growth in that area. And that presents a danger to any young person, older person, middle person, anybody driving.
We're approaching the driveway, getting a little closer to 38.
This is our driveway. This is our car.
Okay.
This is another picture of our driveway and our car, okay? As you can see, you can't see anything here. This is where the access driveway is. If somebody was coming out of there, they couldn't see anybody walking by. If you were driving, you couldn't see it. It's a complete blind spot, and that's very dangerous.
Now, we'll take it one step further, which is the last picture.
Is that it?
No. This one here, I think. Sorry, we didn't plan this. Okay. I apologize, folks, for the delay. This is as you sit, looking out of the driveway, okay? Now, one thing you want to zero in on, if I may ask, that silver car that you saw in the driveway was pulled out onto the street, tree here. Can you see that silver car? That's the view, is you're coming out of the driveway. You cannot see through that big tree. So just wanted to throw some thoughts out after the original comments from folks. And show you what the reality of what we see.
I parked my car there, and the car's there, and I walked in here to take the picture, and you can't see the car at all. So now, we're talking about construction again. After two years, we're talking about trucks. We're talking about people backing up. We're talking about people trying to walk a neighborhood. And yes, we definitely see a danger, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you. I'd request that you would submit those photographs by email to the planning department.
And you should show them to the, to the applicants. They have the right to see them.
Right, absolutely.
And pass them to us.
Right to the applicants right here.
So they have the right to see them.
We thank you for your time. We appreciate your patience.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Witty. Anybody else care to address the board at this time?
My name is Attorney William McDonald, and I reside at 26 Grassipon Road. To be truthful, I don't understand why there's any need for any continuance. It's clear that the special permits should not be granted. The way the statute is set out, 325-51A, it says, in order for a special permit to be granted, several conditions must be met, including the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The use, what little they've done already has adversely affected the neighborhood in terms of water damage, in terms of damage to trees. The specific site is an appropriate locate, is an appropriate location for such use. Of course, it's not an appropriate location. They're not talking about building a two-family house, talking about building a mini resort, two, 3,000-foot structures, an outdoor theater, a playground, a commercial-sized swimming pool. This is absurd. I suggest we vote on it tonight and vote them down. There's absolutely no way that those conditions can be met. It's a quiet, peaceful little neighborhood. You folks are all from the town. You probably understand what, why people come here to live in peace and quiet, not to have loud parties and all sorts of ruckus going on. There was a loud party at the facility on the Fourth of July. No one complained, but there was a lot of noise that could be heard all over the neighborhood. All we're asking for is basically, they've been granted enough as it is. They've been allowed to build a 3,000-foot structure with all these other accoutrements on what amounts to be a fairly small lot. I know an acre lot is a good size, but it's not a good size for two huge houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Anybody else? So we are back at our situation where we were prior to the testimony. So what is the will of the board?
I think a continuance.
Okay. Think so?
Let's make a motion. I'm not part of hearing.
Right, so I would request a motion. Mr. Chadwick? I'd request a motion if that's the way you want to go.
Okay. Make a motion to continue, where is it?
April, August 8th, 6:30.
Applications 2023-4 and 2023-12 to the meeting on August 8th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
We have a motion and a second. Does it have a second? Second. Any further discussion?
Wasn't 20, wasn't 2023-12 withdrawn?
No.
It took it back.
It hasn't been withdrawn yet. I asked them both to continue to the same night.
He talked about it.
Okay, all right, all right.
Withdrawn for a moment.
It was temporarily withdrawn.
Okay, I guess I missed when it came back.
No, it's, okay.
Be interesting, anyway, on favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
One extension, please.
One abstention, excuse me. We'll see you on the 8th, Mr. Savitt. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this point, we move on to case number PB 2023-20, continued from the 27th of June and the 11th of July. Main Street Stone Horse LLC through its agent, Attorney William Riley, is seeking a modification of a site plan special permit, PB 2020, 2019-13. Yeah, thank you for your input. Well, the best, the best way to circulate it would be to get it to Sheila, so she can circulate all, electronic documents, it'd be terrible. It'll be part of the record. Well, no, I appreciate that, and the point is that we did have so much input. I mean, we're very much aware of it, and especially when the room is full. Well, we'll be, we'll be seeing you on the 8th. Thank you so much. That'd be great. Yep, that's correct. So I'm sorry, let me continue here. We're moving on. Excuse me? If you'd like to conduct... If you'd like to conduct this, I just request you go outside. This is, we're continuing with case PB 2023-20, continued from the 27th of June and the 11th of July. Main Street Stone Horse LLC through its agent, Attorney William Riley, is seeking a modification of a site plan special permit, PB 2019-13, in order to reduce patios and walkways and increase parking. The application is pursuant to the code of the town for which Section 325-55, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9. Properties located at 878 Route 28, Sessions Map 25, Parcel A2. Properties located in a commercial high-density CH1 zoning district. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. William Riley, on behalf of Stone Horse Main Street LLC. In our last meeting, the chair kindly provided us with a list of items to be addressed. And I think we've made substantial progress. With regard to the asphalt, we provided copies of the contracts for paving the parking lot, adding a top coat to the existing pavement. We're not expanding the pavement. And paving the gravel sidewalks. I apologize for the late delivery. I dropped off some plans to Sheila today that showed the gravel sidewalks that are going to be paved. We have come up with a proposal for the dumpster. The... Oh, thanks. The... And our proposal is to move it directly across the parking lot from its current location and to construct a ramp close to the north building where the stairs exist today. So they would not, they would not attempt to modify the existing ramp. They would create a new ramp that meets ADA standards.
Great.
Over next to the north building. The reason they would like to keep it there is that they want the dumpster to be within sight of the manager's rooms so that he can have a visual sight line to the dumpster at all times to ensure that only residents are using it and that nobody is disposing of trash or anything in the vicinity of the dumpster. With regard to the stockade versus screening, I'll repeat again that Mr. Rudnick has reported to me that they've done the planting plan proposed along the north boundary twice. Both times, the plants died because of water restrictions and the fact that they don't have a sprinkler system. I believe that the screening planting that was proposed as a part of our permit was a visual screen. Now, there's a concern about noise. We believe that a stockade fence, similar to the fence that already borders most of the north boundary for the houses that are considerably closer than the remaining buildings, is much more effective in terms of shielding from sound. The... Mr. Rudnick is in discussions with two separate landscaping companies about forming a contract to provide regular maintenance on the property. And I hope to have something to forward to Sheila in the next couple of days on that. The... So at a previous meeting, I believe it was Mr. Sabat on behalf of Mr. Drusilla, reported that a neighbor on Old County Road was concerned about traffic. So we don't know who the neighbor was or what the specific objection was. Shayla, at your request, contacted both the fire department and the police department as to whether they would have an objection to having a gate at the Old County Road access to our parking area. And not surprisingly, both the police department and the fire department indicated, of course, they really didn't have a problem because, you know, they get there no matter what. So I placed a call to Bruce Young, who's the fire inspector, and also to Lieutenant Hutton in the absence of Deputy Chief Considine, who had previously provided. And the, both of them indicated that they weren't aware that there's any problem at that location. And the, and they had no objection to the fact that it would remain open. I asked them if they considered the access, which would be used much more heavily. It comes out on Route 28 at the intersection with Deep Hole Road as a, as a major problem. Both of them demurred on that. Lieutenant Hutton said, well, we'd have to do a traffic study to know if that's a problem or not. But I think common sense says that if you're coming out of that driveway, your sight line up Deep Hole Road is very difficult. And encouraging more traffic at that intersection, I don't think is a good idea, personally. My client is very much opposed to having a gate of any sort at the Old County Road driveway. And would not agree with one. Parking. So the, we're not proposing, other than the temporary use of the gravel area, which we believe will be temporary, we're not proposing any additional parking. As I reported to you in the past, Mr. Rudnick doesn't deal directly with the residents. He deals with their employers. And so this year, there are some J1s, but we're still dealing with the H2B visa people. There are people who are in the country for, usually for several years, and most of them have cars. And that's created a problem for Mr. Rudnick as well as concerns for the town. The... So I can assure the board that we have a plan for next year where we'll deal with the employers to ensure that motor vehicles will be kept to an absolute minimum and that more of the employers will use shuttle buses to get their employees back and forth from the property. At the moment, we're kind of stuck because we have contracts, the people are there, and we do our best to control where they're parking. But, you know, they're just, there aren't enough parking spots for them. That's, it's really a temporary situation that'll be corrected next year. With the sprinkler plan, Mr. Rudnick has learned that it costs over $100,000 to sprinkle the building. So the plan right now is to not sprinkle the building and to use it as a single or two-family house next year. Again, we're, we've committed in accordance with our agreement with Jack Me to some persons, some employers, so there's staff to stay there. But as soon as those contracts expire in the fall or as soon as spaces open up in the larger buildings, the residents that are living on the second floor will be moved over to the other, the larger buildings when space opens up there as the, as the temporary help returns to their homes and spaces open up in the larger buildings. The... I think in my letter, I stated that Mr. Rudnick hopes to have the paving done in the month of August. He's working with the asphalt company. We've provided copies of the agreement and the check, making a down payment on the paving. On the lighting plan, you know, I'm not a lighting engineer. It's probably pretty obvious. But I have driven by the property several times in the evening. And the, the pole lamps that exist on the property that were part of the permit that you granted provide, I would say, significant illumination for the entire space between Route 28 and both buildings. I believe that the solar lights, which are less than knee height, that line the sidewalks, are sufficient to guide people along those sidewalks without difficulty. As I indicated at our last meeting, they had a problem with the electrically wired lights being maintained. There are a lot of broken ones. And so they've learned that the solar-powered lamps are, don't get broken and, you know, they work even if the power goes out. So as long as the sun shines. You know, we'd prefer not to have a performance bond. Mr. Rudnick has, as I've reported also in the past, had significant financial difficulties as a result of the pandemic and the fact that he wasn't able to have any residents at all for a while. And so, given that the, really, the only significant, I believe, the only significant expense left is the paving. And we've made our down payment on that, and we'll have the work done in the month of August. I haven't seen Jack Me's letter, so...
Have you not seen it?
I haven't seen it till just now.
Okay, so...
It's done this afternoon, as was his plan.
Because I'm having some allergy things. Can I ask somebody to read it into the record, just so we can...
The rec, is Jack Me?
The Me letter, yeah. Dated July 25th.
I can read it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Dated July 25th, 2023, to Duncan Berry, Chair, Harwich Planning Committee. Read 872 Route 28, Stone Horse. Dear members of the planning board, I'm sorry that I have a previous commitment and will not be able to join your meeting tonight. I have reviewed Attorney Riley's recent update letter dated July 20th, 2023, to the board regarding the Stone Horse property on Route 28, Harwich, Mass. One, they've submitted an estimate for the paving in the parking area on the sidewalks along with hopeful expectation that they will have this work done in the month of August. Please remember that the sidewalks were to be concrete, which hold up much better in these walkway situations. Two, they're proposing to move dumpster across the parking lot and creating an ADA ramp. If the board approves this relocation, I would like to suggest that the typical language is added to properly screen the dumpster. Three, they're obtaining quotes for a six-foot stockade fence and would like to disregard the landscape plan that was originally part of the approval. The last time that I was on site, I noted a volume of dead plantings. I would like to suggest that the original project design architect inspect the property and provide the board with a letter signed and stamped by a Massachusetts Registered Landscaped Architect that states that all planting shown of the approved landscape plan have been installed and are in good condition. Further, that any, that part of any modification that you grant to these plantings and/or fencing, that the full area is called out with what is expected and that any damaged, dead planting must be replaced immediately to keep the buffer in the expected conditions. Four, they stated they no longer want to install the required sprinkler system to the front building. Please note of the finding of facts, 10 from PB 2019-13 decision, which states the buildings, with the exception of the outbuildings, sheds, and gazebo will be sprinkled for fire safety. I have a couple of concerns with this building. A, on May 9th, 2019, the owner applied for a change of use from motel office to single-family dwelling, which was approved and inspected by the building commissioner and the fire inspector for this change. It appears that they have disregarded this legal change and have been using it as a rooming house. B, as part of my inspections to try to certify these buildings, I have questioned Mr. Riley on this and had his design professional, Theodore Strebert, review this building, and he provided a code analysis in which he determined that this building clearly lacked the required sprinkler system. It is also interesting that he also mentions the lack of required railings at the exterior door on the south side of the building, which still have not been installed. C, as part of the project, they designed and built out the fifth required accessible unit as determined by the total occupancy within this building. D, whether this building is used as a dormitory or a single family with an accessible unit, I believe that the sprinkler system must be installed. E, if they do not want to install this required safety feature, then the building should be vacated immediately. Five, there doesn't appear to be any follow-up discussion on the lack of the smaller patios as approved. Six, I would not be in support of changing the required walkway lights to be solar fixture. I wonder why they had trouble with the original units. At least the hard-wired units have conduit in the ground to add some support, which the solar units typically do not. Were the original ones hit or kicked? If so, the solar lights could easily be kicked further. Respectfully submitted, Jack Me, Harwich Building Commissioner, with attachments.
Thank you. Before you go on, we have another return absent, or an absent member. So before you continue with testimony, that was just added to the record. He can catch up with that, so. Should we just declare like a five-minute recess? Yeah, I'd like to take a five-minute recess. Sure. Okay, thank you.
Three hour and a half. You should take five minutes.
Well, how about 50 seconds? It's already five, five minutes. Okay.
You have to go to the 811.
811, okay.
Riley?
Thank you very much.
Please.
So with respect to Mr. Mee's letter, the because of the history we have now of the use of the buildings, and the fact that all the parkings on the side are in front of the buildings, the residents rarely, if ever, walk over to Old County Road. I mean, there's nothing there for them. So his concern about concrete would hold up much better. I mean, asphalt is going to last just fine for the limited use, pedestrian use on this walkway. So I think that you could find that asphalt is fine for this purpose. The number two, he wants properly screen the dumpster. We agree with that and we would do it. We have, we have a fence around it in any event. The, so I think that maybe Mr. Mee misunderstands. We're asking to modify the decision so that we don't move forward with the planting plan. We've done it twice. It died twice. Maybe if it had as much rain as we had this spring, they would have lived. But, you know, in the drought years with limitations on water, they didn't. As I discussed a little earlier, and I don't know if Mr. Mee thought of this, but the original purpose of the screening was a visual screen. The concerns expressed by the neighbors and the representatives at this point have more to do with noise than visual matters. I believe that a six-foot stockade fence has a solid structure is far more effective at shielding the properties from noise. I'd also point out that the only section remaining is the one that's furthest away from all the buildings. And that the fence at that location would be far better than going through and doing the planting plan again. So that's why we've requested that as a modification. I really don't understand Mr. Mee's concerns about the quote office building. He and I had an agreement, which he's reported to you, that as long as we sprinkle the building by next April, we could continue to use the building as we have in the past years. So based on that, we went ahead and signed contracts for people to use those rooms. Now we say, well, if you're not going to sprinkle it, then they have to leave immediately. Well, you know, that's not going to happen because we have contracts with these people. But the I really don't understand his idea that, you know, even if it's a single-family residence, it has to be sprinkled. I'm a little mystified by that. And the, you know, it's conceivable, I mean, if you agree with, you know, that's really a building permit issue as opposed to a planning board issue. But the, if as the building commissioner insists that as a single-family residence, it has to be sprinkled, and you leave the requirement in your decision that all the buildings have to be sprinkled, well, then we'll sprinkle it as a single-family residence. Turns out the cost of sprinkling a single-family residence is a lot less than sprinkling it as a commercial building. Because a commercial building, and this is how he made his decision not to move forward with sprinkling. All the, all the sprinkler system has to be copper pipe. And in a single-family residence, a sprinkling system can be PVC pipe. And the cost difference is really astonishing. It's like $20,000 versus $120,000. So we still don't think, I mean, you know, I just don't understand his point here that if we have a single-family residence that has an accessible unit, so in other words, if a member of the family requires an accessible unit, you know, it'd still be a single-family residence. And so I'm a little mystified by saying it must be installed. The, and, you know, the suggestion that it has to be vacated immediately, I think is unreasonable, only in the context of the fact that we had an agreement and we move forward on the basis of that agreement. So we've signed contracts. The, and as I've indicated to the board, as soon as space opens up in the larger buildings, we only have five people living in this second floor. As soon as we have space open up in the larger buildings, we'll move the people out of it. But the, but the manager and his family are going to continue to live there. So again, the modification we'd like to receive regarding the front office building is that the decision says all buildings must be sprinkled. And so we'd prefer not to sprinkle the front office building if it's being treated as a single-family residence, which we're agreeing that that's how we'll be, that's how we'll be used moving forward. Only the office, only the manager and his family will be living there. So and then, I mean, the, it's, the walkway lights are a maintenance item. And I think the goal really isn't whether they have to be hardwired or not. The question is, are they effective in providing sufficient lighting so the walkways can be used safely on a dark night? And as I say, I ain't just roaming around in the middle of the night, but I've been up there a couple of times. And in my opinion, in terms of outlining a sidewalk, the solar lights do fine. You've only, but you've already got the big pole lights that provide plenty of illumination. And then on his comment about the patios, we did discuss the patios. We've asked, as I reported to you, the former building commissioner suggested to Mr. Rundick he only build one, large one, rather than four small ones. The, if we were going to add smaller patios on the front of the building, it'd be over
Scalable over there?
Okay. They'd be over in front of the south building, which is where the gazebo was, where when, when some of the residents were hanging out in the gazebo, the neighbors were very vociferously complaining about the noise. And that's why we removed the gazebo completely, to eliminate that source of disturbance for the neighbors. If we added patios down there, I think we might be faced with the same problem. So I think that even though we didn't have the authority to do it, Mr. Chesley's suggestion was a good one, keep it between the buildings so that the noise would affect the neighbors in a less significant way. So that would be our statement for today and.
All right. Any comments from the board? I know I've got a couple of things. Mary, please.
So the, just the first thing that I wanted to comment on was the sprinkler system, right? So I think our original decision said all buildings needed to be sprinkled.
Right.
I think that leaves, that leaves the leeway to the building inspector to determine what that sprinklering needs to be based on whatever the building permit and the occupancy is.
Oh, that's a, right. It's a building code issue.
Right. So, so I don't think we're of any help when it comes to, to sprinkling or not sprinkler, splink, sprinklering the, the office. I'm personally not willing to remove that requirement until you figure that out with the building inspector, with how the use is going to be because.
But I'd like to, let me make a suggestion in that regard. Having in mind your time, and this would not be a particularly significant planning board issue.
Mm-hmm.
What I would say is the dormitory will have to be sprinkled if it's a building code requirement. And leave it at that. And that's, that's between our code guy, the architect, and Jack Mee.
And my only comment to you is you're under a temporary occupancy at the moment. So that's all under the control of the building, the building inspector, right? So, so he's going to do it.
With a clock ticking on that, too.
He's going to do what he sees fit with, in that regard.
Right. I agree.
You know, I, I just, I just don't know about making, making a change. I guess I might consider that, I might consider language that the determination to sprinkler the original motel building is the purview of the building inspector as a zoning enforcement officer and the enforcer of the building code.
Right, building code. More of a building code issue than zoning.
Do you think the lights and the walkway substrate composition is?
So my suggestion is that we, I think we have to go through the different points and see what the board, what the board's temperature is on some of these changes. So the first item with respect to asphalt with regard to the parking area and the, the walkways, is the board willing to accept the remaining walkways be asphalted instead of being done with concrete? So I think we have to, I, those are some of the, those are, those are the changes that they're asking for. So I think we have to talk about that as board and, and see what people think.
Quick question, though. Is this in the purview of the building inspector in the same way? No, because it's part of our finding of facts?
I think we had, I think we had put it as part of the special permit.
Special permit, I mean.
I think what happened was we proposed them as concrete. So naturally, you guys just said, okay, they'll be concrete.
Right.
I don't think there was a lot of discussion about it, to tell you the truth.
Because I don't, personally, I don't think like, you know, the, the makeup of the, the concrete versus asphalt thing is held that we have to die on, this kind of thing. When we're looking at other CO stuff.
I don't disagree. I don't know that I'm, I'd be upset. I'm, I have no
Right.
I have no opinion on asphalt versus concrete. I think the, the walkways need to be paved so that they're accessible.
Correct. I think the thing about the lighting, however, he brings up the business the required walkway lights.
So let's, can we just, why don't we just go right down the letter?
Yeah, yeah.
So the second part is the, the new, the new proposed location of the dumpster. Is the, does the board in general approve of moving the dumpster from where it currently exists to that new location?
That seems reasonable.
Yep.
Right. No objections?
No objections to that one.
With screening, okay. And then I guess the next.
We got, Greg?
I'm sorry, just a question along those lines. It's not clear from, to me anyway, from the proposed remaining work plan that was submitted, the proposed dumpster relocation in terms of grade. I know we asked for it to be moved because of the ramp that it currently exists where in the current location. Is it going to be going back up to where the proposed new dumpster location is? Or is it the same level of grade? I assume it'll be on a concrete pad.
The grade where the dumpster is located will be level.
With the parking lot?
With the parking lot.
So no ramp?
Because the truck has to be able to pick it up.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And you'd be amenable to screening around the dumpster?
Yeah.
Great.
So I think the next question that we have to decide relates to the planting. Is the board willing, understanding that counsel's point is they planted twice and the plantings have failed twice? Is the board going to require the planting a third time? Or is the board willing to accept a stockade fence in place of the planting?
I will go on and say I'm okay with the stockade. I think he makes a reasonable argument for the optical versus the acoustical issues. And it's a sound reflector as opposed to an absorber. And if you can't make the stuff grow, you lose both.
Okay. I have an objection to that because I make things grow all the time. And I think that the idea that they failed is just maintenance and, and bad planting. Okay? It's on the plan. We've spent a lot of time about landscaping and trees in almost every application. So I would not be willing to say you're off the hook. I hear that we had a drought. All of us had a drought. It doesn't mean that every tree that I ever planted or every plant died. So I think that's a, a false argument. Okay? So I would be.
So to the extent that, that some people are still looking at plantings.
Yes.
I guess my, my request then, at least from my perspective, is to have their landscaped architect look at it again and see if they have some other suggestions. Because it may be the wrong plants in the wrong locations based on, based on it failing twice. I mean, that's a lot of money to go up. It was a, it was It was a, it was not a small landscaped plan.
But this is a new plan with new, new plans suggested right here.
I don't, without looking at the other one, I don't know.
It is, because it's all different plants that have not been suggested before.
So is, is your, is your client willing to go forward with this landscape plan? Because that wasn't my understanding from your, from your requests of us. So that's why I'm asking the question.
My client is going to follow the decision of the board. We have suggested a stockade fence makes more sense than the plantings in terms of noise mitigation. If the board wants the plantings, then we'll do the plantings.
These plantings, is this correct? This is a new plan?
I tell you, I've never seen that, but, you know, I'm just a lawyer. Submit it, and then that's what they'll plant.
Has this been submitted?
What's the date on it?
This is the original landscape plan.
This is the original landscape plan.
This is the original?
Yep.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. It was an expensive landscape plan. And, and I do believe this was the original plan. It stated...
What quantity is an expensive landscape plan? This is not an expensive landscape plan.
I'm, I'm just saying...
So it's like, if we're getting to where's the board's opinion on landscape plan?
Yep.
I'm saying that they need a good landscape plan. If this was the original...
And if this was the original, my, my request is that we have them revisit it and see if there was a reason other than drought why these plants, perhaps these were the wrong plants.
So the decision would be have a landscape architect revisit this plan and come back? Is that correct?
That would, that's, that is my suggestion to the board. I'm not trying to be difficult here, I'm trying to get through this.
Exactly, so are we all.
It's also a nice interim step between having a registered li...
Exactly.
Landscape architect go on the record.
Well, I mean, they, I think they're, I think they had a registered landscape architect who drafted it in the first place.
I'm, I'm not certain. I mean, I was present, but we just, we presented plans, which my client gave to me, and they were...
I seem to recall there was, because I seem to recall there were more than one landscape architect in the room at the time, if memory serves.
Okay, great.
It was a while ago. I admit that.
It was a while ago. I have trouble remembering what happened after a weekend, so...
So, so if that's the case that the, that the, is the board, if the majority of the board is leaning towards plantings, I'm assuming you're leaning towards plantings in, and not a fence?
Well, can we have a straw poll on planting versus the fence?
I'm asking, yeah.
Right.
I would prefer to see both. The fence and the planting.
Well, that's, you know, it's either the original planting or a fence.
But you could take it back.
You asked for a straw vote.
That is...
No, that's fine, I appreciate it.
But remember, he was, he's here asking for relief from some of what was already there, and these are, if we're requiring him to do what's already there, that's...
That's fine. We'll do it.
I don't believe I've seen the original plan, so, and I haven't done a site visit.
This looks like it was, this looks like it was it. It was the nineteen, March of nineteen.
Okay, that's the landscape plan, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll, I'll, I'll just have it redone, that's all. I mean, did you...
No opinion.
Okay.
I have other opinions, I'll talk about in a while.
I would like to see this original plan revisited and look at those.
Okay. I'll concede if that makes a majority have the...
That's our action, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sprinkling, I think, I think we already talked about unless, and the other people had more comments?
Yep.
I did have a question.
Please.
Sure, thank you. Do you know, Ms. Attorney Riley, how many units are in the two new buildings, north and south total? For some reason, I thought I remember going back, original plan was ninety? Does that sound right?
Well, that's, right, the...
Roughly.
Right. So, they, on this plan, which I think you have...
Eighty, eighty-four, I see.
They're showing eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
And six, and six in the dormitory. So the, so we take the dormitory out, so there'd just be the forty-two.
Okay, so my question is, are those eighty-four units currently occupied under contract right now?
Yes.
So there's no ability, there are no empty units that you could immediately move the people that are in the office slash residential structure, the older one, out of there into the dormitory tomorrow, next week, soon?
No.
No.
No, they've, and they, the contracts run into the fall.
Right.
You know, I think at some point in October, some of the residents start leaving. As soon as that happens, we'll move people out of, of the front building.
Thank you.
So can I ask a question? Is the board amenable to, to the statement that, that I had said earlier that, that as relating to the original motel building, that the extent of the sprinklering is to be determined by the building commissioner based on the, on the building code?
Yes.
Yes.
Seems like he already has.
He has, but...
Candidly...
But he's got...
He hasn't, because he, he doesn't sign a building code. He just says it has to be done immediately. That's, you know, his opinion.
I understand the difference.
Well, see...
That's a different dance, we don't have to worry about it.
Right.
So, and the last item was the patio, oh, second one.
Yeah, so is the board willing to accept a single patio, or is your mindset to have them rebuild the four? I will go on record as saying, I think if our, and I have no reason to believe he didn't, if our building commissioner suggested a change that he shouldn't have suggested, I don't necessarily think the applicant should be penalized in that respect, as far as making, getting rid of the one patio into... That's another item that we would have to make a change on if we're making a change.
Emily?
There have been, I think, questions and suggestions that with that one patio, that there, there's exploration done on enclosing that or doing something to minimize noise. Has that, I, I don't think we've discussed that. Has that been explored, or have we discussed that?
I really haven't discussed that with my client. Candidly, I mean, one of the neighbors spoke to me about it, and he suggested putting a four-foot wall around it, which I didn't understand how that would mitigate the sound. Candidly, we've been dealing with other issues, so I haven't raised that issue with my client. I'd be happy to discuss it with him.
Is that something you could look at with the land, when you're looking at the landscape?
Yeah, I would say that it, it wouldn't be something we could do this summer, it would have to be something, you know, in the fall or next spring, if it was going to be done at all. But I'll, I'll explore that with him.
I think it's worth exploring, personally. The reason being is that I think it was a, an expedient factor, or that the expedience factor probably figured into that concession. And like with Mary, I'm not going to second guess, but I think the rationale for separate pads was to discourage the formula, formation of larger crowds and aggregates and evening events, and I think that's the, that's the original rationale. And I think also that's kind of a, kind of common sense design issue. So, I don't know, like, are we going to have to go to the mat? This is the question. We've already had behavioral issues out there. The theory is that you don't produce that by, you discourage that with smaller, you know, assembly areas. So, you know, is this something we, like you said, this is actually at this point a punishment? But the flip side is, that there's already been kind of a concern, there's reason for concern. So it is a dilemma. I, I want to bring that out, and I think it's worth at least having a couple of points of discussion here. And I'm sure that the neighbors have a point of view on that. So the sooner we kind of look at that, that is the critical, you know, one of the critical things here. So, but it, do you have a, like, are you guys like, gonna go to the mat on that one, or?
Well, you know...
I know.
We're just trying to work our way through the list.
I know, I know. But it's, do you understand, do you understand our concern?
Yeah, no, if you wanted us to put patios out in front of the south building, so that whatever noise is generated is going to bother the neighbors who didn't like the gazebo there.
Right, right.
I mean, I, you know, I mean, patios are relatively inexpensive to install.
Right.
So...
We're just looking at a pad, breaking a pad, right, and putting dirt between the pads. I mean, is that...
Well, you know, I'm, you know, again...
I think the original plan was, was four separate ones on the...
Four separate, correct.
On the far corners, so...
Do we have any, I mean, is this worth discussing tonight, or?
They deserve some input from us.
Absolutely.
Right? So, so that's why I'm, I'm raising the questions.
So that's, that's my point. I'm, you know, I'm sympathetic, but I'm also kind of skeptic about the way it's gone. And I, you know, I just, how many, how many variables are we going to have in play at one point, right? I mean, it's, so I, I think part of it is ranking, and what we're doing here is ranking to make motion, to move things ahead. So I'm just putting it out there that this is, at some point, we're going to have to deal with this.
We're having the discussion to figure out what, if any, changes we're going...
Correct.
They've come before us for changes to the special permit. So we've got to decide what changes we're amenable to and what changes we're not amenable to. So obviously, you know, the not letting, not doing planting is something that, that the board as a whole isn't in favor of. So we have them revisit that, but...
So we're asking right now about the patios?
Right now, I'm asking about the patio.
Revisit the patio.
Right.
I'm personally not. I, I think, oh, I think one patio is one patio. I, I agree with Emily that if there's some screening that can be done to, to maybe mitigate that noise, that might be helpful. But to break up the, an existing patio and make four new ones, we're, we're trying to get them to, to pave walkways by August, just...
And we haven't even hit the parking issue.
Correct.
Okay, so like, I will, but I wanted to bring it up, okay?
Yep, no good discussion.
Then the last item...
So there's actually more than just one. The solar lights on the walkways.
Right.
So our building commissioner has commented that, that I think he was concerned that the solar units could be knocked over more easily than the, than the...
Hardwired.
Hardwired ones. I don't know where you folks stand on that. I'm, I don't, it's not a hill on which I'm looking to die.
I would, I would say hardwired, because the wire's probably there. It's just, this is a maintenance or something else. I, I don't think any of us are experts in solar lighting, but the wires have to be there already for the lights that were required. So I say replace the lights.
Yeah, if I could address that just very briefly. We don't want the tail wagging the dog either. I mean, the question, the idea is to provide lighting along the sidewalks...
Yep.
...that is consistent and remains working. And their experience is the hardwired lights are damaged and don't work.
But there's also a whole series of maintenance issues. There were railings and lights all at the same time that we took testimony on the last time through. So I think this is more of a maintenance issue rather than a, a choice, and I think lighting's important.
So do I. I just don't think it has to be wired lighting.
The wires are already in the ground, they're there.
I beg your pardon?
If the first lighting failed, the wi, they were wired to begin with.
Right.
So the wires are still there.
Right.
Put in wired lights. That's my opinion.
And then if, if the lights get kicked or broken, you know, then it, it's a much more significant maintenance item than, you know, buying another solar light and sticking it in the ground. The real question is not whether they should be, we should be required, because we initially showed them as wired, that we should keep doing that.
But you asked to take a poll of the board, so I'm giving my opinion as part of the poll of the board on the lights.
So what about everybody else? Yeah, somebody else could...
I agree that with the building commissioner, it would be better to have conduit in there and have a light attached to a piece of solid conduit that's either suspended in concrete or surrounded by dirt, than to take a little point at the end of a, of a, of solar light and put it in there. But can I, can I make a comment?
Please.
This, this was originally issued in 2019, correct?
Hmm?
It isn't a fortune to do this stuff, but the applicant has had revenue in 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023. And everything that is being discussed here by, or being proposed by the applicant is just a way to not spend money. That money, he's in business, he's renting ninety rooms, I'm sure they don't get what they get for a hotel room, but they get, I'm sure, decent money, and I realize it's a seasonal business. And I also realize that he's doing a favor for the community and for the businesses that have their, their workers there. And that, that's a good thing. But this is not, the fact that four years later, we're still talking about simple stuff like this is, makes me feel like we're being played. It's cheaper for him to pay you your $400 an hour than it is for him to make these, these, these changes. And, you know, you talk about the contract. I'm not a lawyer, but I do understand, I think, that the, the concept of avoidable contract. So the fact that you have a contract really has no relevance on the requirement that the, that the applicant apply, or comply with the existing regulations and the, the terms of the permit that was issued to him. So it's, I sit here going, how many times are we going to be asked to donate our time so that he can save a few bucks and just pay you your hourly rate rather than invest the money, which, which is small money?
Well, if I could, in the first place, the wires are already installed. We had hardwired lights, and they kept breaking them. And so the goal was not to save money, the goal was to have a way of providing lights along the sidewalks that were easier to replace than going through the whole hardwired thing again. So...
I don't think this is an ace hardware throw-in, solar thing in the ground fix. Harry's made his point about the lights. I've made my point about the lights. We're still pulling the ground.
I'm with you about the lights for the poll.
Great.
Greg?
I'm in agreement that it should be hardwired.
All right.
My look with solar lights is, is not a positive one, and they seem to go bad after a short period of time. So if the damage is caused by vandalism or somebody's lack of care in mowing the maintenance, it's, it's, it's a maintenance issue.
Well, they, they stick up, they stick up, the hardwired ones stick up about eighteen inches, so they're not, it's not a mower problem.
Well, whatever's, whatever's causing the damage to the hardwired lights, it's above ground because the conduit's buried. I think I asked the question our last meeting. Whatever, however the hardwired lights that exist today have been damaged, what's to prevent the same action from damaging a solar light? I don't understand it.
Well, all I know is that...
To Harry's point, it sounds like it's a, it's a financial issue, and you mentioned that it's not, but it just leaves me wondering. So I'm in favor of the hardwired.
Well, I understand...
I'm just going to go on record as saying that I have solar lights on my fence that I have had up for almost three years, and I have not had one of them break, I have not have, had one of them stop working, and they are brighter than any floodlights that I have put in my yard. So I'm just going on record, that's my experience with solar lights, and that's my...
But you don't have ninety, ninety residents?
No, and, and I'm, I'm clearly in the minority, I'm just pointing out the reason for my comment.
So we've hit the lights.
All right. So what's the next item?
So now we have to ask about, we have to ask about the parking lot and, and the gating. What's the board's pleasure on the gate? I believe the applicant would like the gate to remain open and made a point about having all of the traffic come in and out directly across from Deep Hole Road onto 28. about having all of the traffic come in and out directly across from Deep Hole Road onto 28, um, which is a valid point, um, versus having the second means of access, um, along county, um, along Old County Road, which is a public way, and they, which they pointed out, which is duly noted, so.
I don't think we can stipulate that. Right, it's a highway, it's a highway matter, isn't it?
It's a, it's a, it's a public way.
Yeah.
So, the police and fire commented that they didn't mind if it was gated, but the applicant is saying that they would like it to remain open.
Right.
So, I'm just raising the issues, trying to get a start.
Um, so the gate came up from a neighbor's, extensive neighbor comments.
Right.
No, it came up from a neighbor.
Nope, there were multiple neighbors, we could go back to the notes. We had a whole night of neighbor comments.
We only had one person, Mr. Sabat, speaking on behalf of Mr. Driscilla, who said a neighbor complained to him.
We wouldn't have gotten this far.
You want us to give up a property right, which we're not going to give up.
A property right?
We have access to Old County Road, that's a property right, and we're not going to give it up.
We're trying to solve a, a neighbor issue with a gate. We're now at a, an impasse on the gate, so again, it's the polling of the board.
It's a, it's a public way, so.
It's a public way, and so it's maybe not our decision.
Remember, they can appeal our decisions just as well as a neighbor can appeal our decisions, so I'm just-
And maybe it's not our decision.
I'm pointing it out.
So, where are we on the gate?
Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not in, I'm not opposed strongly or in favor strongly, um, but I don't know that a gate would solve the problems we've heard from the neighbors, mostly about noise and, and so on and so forth. So, I guess I'm not willing to die on the hill of saying there needs to be a gated fence, even though police and fire have said it's not an issue for them, or they can get through with bolt cutters. Public safety is a concern as well, um, so that's where I stand on that.
Harry, do you have a point of view?
I do not.
Emily?
I am concerned that the gate could pose more issues than it solves, so I'm not in favor.
That's where I am.
I agree.
Okay.
Gates stuck.
Um, the other issue I think was the paving, that the paving could get done, was going to get done in August sometime.
Right.
Which is slightly better than later this fall.
Correct.
Do we have a remaining issue on the parking, the number of spaces?
So, I think we had a question on whether there was a, an extra portion that was, whether we were going to change the parking, or whether there was going to be a portion that was going to be gravelled, correct? If I recall that.
Right, so there is a portion, if you have this plan.
Mm-hmm.
So, far right-hand side.
Where the dumpsters.
Yeah, where the dumpsters, that's gravel. And we don't want additional parking spaces because-
Because you don't foresee them next year.
Because next year, we're not going to have, uh, same number of residents who have automobiles.
You're going to have shuttle buses-
Shuttle buses.
Bringing them back and forth from the facility.
And so, the contracts that Mr. Rudnick signs will, uh, deal with, uh, the number of vehicles. So, we prefer to leave the parking as it is, uh, rather than expanding.
Was there anything else besides the, the other walkways that needed to be paved then? Were you repaving the, or was that, was that because of that?
The reason for paving the parking is that, uh, the, what was put down was, was a base coat. And, uh, because the finished coat was never put down, the drainage wasn't being, uh, wasn't going to the drains, you know? So, if you, if you take a look at the comments from Chris Nickerson and the comments in the, uh, paver's contract, uh, and we're going to have a surveyor supervising that work to make sure that the grading is correct so that the drainage as designed works. So, they're going to put a finished coat on the entire parking lot to ensure that the drainage goes where it's supposed to go, stormwater. And so, that's why we have to pave, because of stormwater.
All right, and that's, and that's August.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Thank you. Would it make sense, um, or help us to have Chris take a look at the proposal that has been submitted by the applicant for the paving?
All right, we hope.
I know he indicated in a previous, uh, memo that the paving of a road and paving of the-
Right.
This, uh, property is different, but just in terms of, I, I'm not knowledgeable about it, so.
Well, happy to do, we, we've already done it.
You've already talked.
Yeah, when I, when my client gave me this, I emailed it to Chris Nickerson. And, I mean, I'm happy to have you guys do it too.
We have a response from Chris saying, yeah, I don't, I haven't seen anything.
I think just to the extent that, that, that the paving of the top coat is going to solve the drainage issue that he's having on the, on the pooling on the roadway.
And one of the recommendations he made, I did get, it's tough when you can't remember everything. I did get an email from him in which he recommended, uh, someone to supervise the paving. So, we're going to have Terry Eldridge, who's the registered land surveyor, who worked on the original plan. He's going to be there to ensure that the grading is correct, and that was Chris Nickerson's comment. Do we have somebody there to ensure that the work is done so the stormwater goes where it's supposed to go?
Thank you.
Talking about?
Nothing else, I just have, um, one other thing is, was an as-built part of what we need to get done here too?
So, I think you're-
At the end of the process, or?
I think at the end of the day, ultimately, when, whenever we decide, we decide-
Right.
Then they would, part of, one of the new additional conditions would be that an as-built-
Stipulation, correct, okay.
Then an as-built be filed.
Right.
Okay.
But we have to make the changes.
Correct, so that was all, that was my, just my question, all right.
So, so what makes sense? Revisit landscaping at the next, at the next meeting, and hopefully can wrap it up then? Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, you guys want a registered land arch, registered landscape architect. I don't know if I can get one by the, by your next meeting. I mean, I, I want to schedule for that, and I'll try, but we have to, we have to get the guy. I don't know if we can get the person who did the design. Get a guy who can look at the existing plan, look at the site, and say that, yeah, we can take care of this. I don't, I don't know if we can do that.
I guess my question on the plan is just if it fails twice, is it the, is it, was it failing for a reason other than drought?
Right.
And that was-
No, I, I think I'd be inclined to go with-
Before you plant them for the third time, and-
Oh, I think, I think it's, you know, they, you know, they should probably put in a sprinkler system, you know?
Sprinkle everything.
Including the building.
Do it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the irrigation system for plants is a lot less expensive. But, you know, one way or the other, the plants have to be watered, and clearly they weren't, you know? And Mr. Rudnick's not out there watering them, and, you know, so.
Understood.
I mean, you need a, you need a 300-foot hose to go out and water the far side of the stuff, so, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's difficult. I think they, they proposed what is basically drought-tolerant plants, and they still didn't survive, so.
Right.
That's all, I, that's the only place I was coming from on, on the comment, to revisit the plan, because if-
I think we, I would be of the, uh, opinion to revisit the plan, um, because that's also a big part of the as-built, correct?
That's a big part of their requirements under the special permit.
Yep.
That's why, I mean, if we were talking doing a fence instead, then it's a fence.
Yep, yep, no, I think we revisit it, and if it's, and by next meeting, it's the meeting after.
Correct.
And we're, and then we have made, I mean, kudos, we've made progress.
Because the meeting after that.
August 22nd.
Right, so that, then we're blotting up on the September deadline, which I think is-
Picket of, of, you can say, yeah.
Right, which is the expiration of the CO. So, we want to make, get you under there.
Eight or the 22nd, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
So, should we say August 22nd, we'll see?
Yeah, that'd be great. See, the, the difficulty is, not a difficulty, one of the difficulties is that we're supposed to get material to Sheila, you know, a week before the meeting, and to get a landscape architect, get him to look at the plan, get him to visit the site.
And get it done by the eighth, it's a tight window.
Yeah, so, if we could go to August 22nd, that'd be great.
Let's do it.
Okay. I move that we continue. PB.
20.
Excuse me, Mary.
Am I on the wrong one?
Yes, number 20. Craig?
Just a quick question, do we also need to discuss a performance bond?
So, if the board is interested in having a performance bond, I'm sure. I, I think the, the things to consider on the performance bond is what the timing is on, on what they're going to get done, if this stuff is going to get, is supposed to be done, and, you know.
I think I got so many plates spinning right now.
Yeah, I don't think we need to.
Let's at least try and make it safe, secure, that's my concern, is just getting a safe.
I mean, I, there's, there's nothing wrong with requesting a performance bond. They might be done with it before we get a performance bond signed.
Right.
If, if it's just a matter of, of paving and lighting and that stuff, that's my only two sides of it.
My concern is, is pretty much what I, what Harry said. It seems like, you know, we've just been going over and over and over, and there's always an excuse, and always an excuse, and always an explanation, and then we get there, and it didn't happen that way for whatever reason. And I, way, even though I understand it's a short period of time, month and a half, whatever we're talking about, does that put a little more emphasis on people to get things done?
You have to discuss what you'd want for a performance bond, and you'd have to, would have to defer to, to our-
Counsel.
Engineers for that, and counsel.
I just, I'm throwing it open to you, Mr. Chairman, to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Harry?
My tendency would be to, um, continue this past the date of the expiration of the CO. If that can't be resolved, then all of this is, is irrelevant.
Right.
And it's taking up our time every time Mr. Riley comes here. We do, and it doesn't seem like they're holding up their side of the bill. So, with that looming in the distance, and it's not that far away, September 15th, if I remember correctly, let's continue it beyond that, and then if they're still in business after that, they can come back, and we can talk about modifying the, uh-
Right, but then you're talking, so my only concern with that is then you're talking about a fall planting window that may disappear if you're looking for them to do planting, for the planting to, to be done and be firm enough before winter happens for it to be good planting in the spring, so.
Well, I think we could make, I mean, we could always make a decision that, well, you know, that portion of it would be revisited in the spring or at the appropriate time when we could make an evaluation as to whether or not they've met the requirements of the, the, the-
But then you, then you're not going to have any screening, you're not going to have a fence, and then you're not going to have, then you're not going to have the planting screening, even, and you're not going to have a fence either, so.
Can I, can I, I understand, uh, Mr. Moon's concerns. I think that one of the things that was pretty obvious from Mr. Me's comments at the last meeting is that, uh, he also needs guidance from this board. And I think that, uh, if we have a meeting in August, then Mr. Me would have, uh, your recommendations at that point, as he said at the last meeting. If there's a good faith effort, if a good faith effort, and the board is reasonably satisfied, then he would extend it.
Okay.
So, that's why I think we ought to meet in August, but that's, you know.
He also approves everything based on the special permit and what's been built, and, and gives you building permits based on what our special permit says, so.
So, before we continue, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Sabat, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very quick, because I know it's getting late. Um, two points, and I, and I, I heard the poll on the lock gate, so I'm not, but this is the last time I'll ever talk about a lock gate. I just wanted to, to respond to, to one thing Mr. Riley said. He said that we didn't identify the woman, we were talking about a lady that had complained to Mr. Driscilla about the traffic. Well, she was here, if you remember correctly. She stood up right after I did, and she said that she has supported everything I said, and she was, and she talked about the traffic, and I remember it because it's the first time anyone has ever agreed with me about anything. So, I remember it very well.
Uh, including your wife.
Including my wife. Uh, and in fact, I went home and I bragged to my wife about that, that somebody actually agreed with me. Uh, and secondly, you were persuaded to reduce the, the, the parking here because you were told that this is all going to be bicycles. So, uh, if it's all bicycles, if you have a lock gate on Old County Road, you can still have access by bicycles. You can put, uh, a, a pathway on either side of that gate, and you still have access by bicycles on Old County Road. Uh, you keep them off 28. So, uh, I would ask you to, to give that some thought and, and to at least give it some consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else from the public at this point? Yes, please. Take your time.
I've been here before.
Yes, you have.
Proudly so, and delighted to have the opportunity.
Please remind us with your name and address.
I'll be happy to. I'm Bob Wojnarowski, and I reside at 106 Deep Hole Road. And I'd just like to bring up the point that roughly two weeks ago, after attending one of these meetings, my wife, myself, two of our neighbors, also a butters, as we met with Mr. Rudnick. And we had a very constructive, roughly two-hour discussion, as I can recall. It was at that time when we brought up about the gazebo and how that was the nexus for a lot of this difficulty that we had been experiencing for not one, not two, but for three years, running. And we also talked about the noise in the general sense, of how the noise has been plaguing us, and how it's been such a detriment to our quality of life to have this screaming and what have you going on into early hours of the morning. So, with that as my bit of preamble, I would only want to place, so that you're all aware, the commitment that Mr. Rudnick and one of his colleagues who was in the meeting with us, I think her name was Mary, but let me not swear to that, that he would put security people. Remember, we talked about how important the noise issue, the noise issue, the noise issue? Well, he committed to us and did claim that they are actively pursuing getting security people on board for the purpose of dealing with that issue that was plaguing us. So, I wanted everybody to be aware of that, and again, from the point of view of our dialogue with Mr. Rudnick, entirely constructive, and it wasn't one of these things where he was biting his fingernails and saying, "Oh, I, I really don't want to do that," but he was very forthright in saying to us very directly, "I'll do that, I want to do that." He understood the quality of life issue, I know I'm repeating on that point, but I wanted you all to be aware of that, that that has occurred. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosby.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Anybody else from the public? Okay, why don't we take a look at where we stand for our motion then?
Talking the 22nd?
22nd of August.
So, I move that we continue, um, PB 2023-20, Main Street Stone Horse LLC to August 22nd, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
22nd?
Motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Riley. That takes us to case number PB 2023-22. Vote to continue until the 8th of August. It's Eastward Companies through its agent Susan Ledoux has applied for determination and endorsement of an eight-lot preliminary residential grid subdivision. The application is pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81K through GG. Property is located at 1594 and 1598 Orleans Road, assessors map 107, parcels S dash, excuse me, S2-1 and S2-2, and the residential rural RR zoning district and the Zone 2 Drinking Water Resource Protection District, DWRPD.
I move that we continue the hearing for PB 2023-22 to August 8th, 2023, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Why? Nobody told us that. I'm sitting here all night waiting, and now you tell us that.
This was on the agenda for this evening. It was on the agenda for this evening.
And online, too.
I'm sorry, did you say we are on the agenda?
No, it says the motion to continue was on the agenda for this evening.
It's on our agenda.
It's on the agenda. It was documented. That's why it's here. Well.
I don't even know what that means.
So it says on the agenda that they requested to be continued till next.
Where do we look at? Where should we have seen that?
Online.
It's on the online agenda.
As of last Thursday, it was placed on.
Okay, but you mailed this to us, so we see it, but you don't let us know the other part.
So wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Excuse me. This is not a debate. This is, this is the public meeting law. I'm not.
You put yourself in our place.
I am in your place. I'm here voluntarily.
This is the weirdest thing I've ever done. Like the freaking Twilight Zone.
Thank you.
Time out. Ray Godwald. I'm from East Harwich. I live on Huckleberry Path. I'm not an abutter. First of all, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not, I'm just saying, I didn't, just let me speak, please.
We can't take testimony on the matter.
I'm not taking testimony. Alls I'm saying is, I got a notice regarding this hearing, right? And that's why we're all here.
Right.
So alls I'm saying is, these people all took time out. They're the abutters. I live on the street. I'm not an abutter. I sat with them because I care about the issue, but the reality is that was not communicated to us. And people have been sitting here since 6:30. How, you know, I appreciate your volunteers. You do great work, but we're all here under the impression that this is gonna be discussed. That's all I wanna say, okay?
The applicant requested, the applicant requested a continuance to another date. It's something that does happen on a fairly regular basis, and it was on, and it was on the, it was on the posted agenda for this meeting.
If you come into this meeting this evening, it's right here.
We are required to forty-eight hours in advance of, business hours in advance of any public hearing, to post an agenda that notifies the public what we're going to be discussing, and the requested continuance was posted on that agenda.
What was mailed to us?
We wouldn't, because we don't.
No, and he won't either, because he didn't want us to know.
Okay, excuse me. We have to move on to the next item?
Yeah.
I appreciate your concern, but it's public meeting law. Has been observed. Case number PB 20-2323. John Canducci through his agent, attorney William Kroll, has applied for alternate, wait a minute. I wanna make sure. Do we vote on that?
I didn't hear a second, John, so I'm sorry.
A second.
There was a motion to continue it.
Motion to continue, second by Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Case PB 20-23-23, John Canducci through his agent attorney William Kroll has applied for alternate access. Application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-18K and Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Property is located at 32 Deer Run. Assessor's map 35, parcels P1-2, and the residential medium-density RM and commercial highway CH1 zoning districts. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for your patience this evening. Sorry for the circus atmosphere.
That's all right.
For the previous.
We're all gonna take a breath.
Motion, yes.
I'm attorney William Kroll from Howard's Port, and thank you for hearing us this evening and sticking around so long. And I have seated with me John Canducci. He's the owner of the property, and his wife Nancy is here also waving to you folks. I don't wanna take up a lot of your time, but the Canduccis have owned this property for twenty years, and they went to get a building permit last year, and we had to go to the Board of Appeals for a variance, and were successful. Board of Appeals voted unanimously to grant the variance. And then when Mr. Canducci applied for the building permit, he was told he needs a special permit from the planning board for alternate access, because the frontage for the lot, as you know, every lot has to have frontage on a road. The frontage is on Route 28, right after Uncle Vinnie's and Route 28 heading to Chatham, down the hill where the Red River Ice Plant used to be on the right. Not a good situation. So he's applied for a special permit. I attached a good amount of information to the, to my narrative and my petition, so that you would see what the legalities are. So I attached a copy of the site plan. The Canduccis have designed the house to face the alternate access easement, which is a driveway, a paved driveway that already exists on the ground, and has been there for a good twenty years now. The easement has existed. So I tried to dispel any confusion that the assessor's map shows showing a road going out to Route 28. That doesn't exist on the ground as part of your petition. I think it's the drainage easement on the abutting lot that shows on the, on the other two plans that I attached. So I attached a copy of the Board of Appeals variance decision, and I attached a copy of the original easement. So back in 2003, Mr. and Mrs. Hunt, who owned lots nine and ten, granted a permanent easement to the owners of lots one, two, and three. And the Canduccis own lot two, and that easement runs with the title to their property. It subjects nine and ten to those easement rights, to bring in utilities and to use it as an access route to Deer Run. It's a pertinent, too, legal term. It runs with the title to the Canducci properties, all of the lots one, two, and three. Whoever owns them always has the easement rights. Whoever owns nine and ten is forever subject to these easement rights. So I attached a copy of that, and there was a similar easement from the owner of lot one, so the Canduccis could use the easement area over lot one. So the Canduccis already have and have had, John's had since he bought the property in twenty years ago. Once this easement was recorded, that granted him those rights beginning in 2003. So the easement's been around in existence for twenty years, and it's a paved common driveway for all of the lots that front on 28 but don't want to go onto 28 on that subdivision plan that I attached. This is the last lot that has not been built upon. All the others have houses. They all face the access easement. They do not face Route 28. They do not get their access off of 28. All that being said, it's our contention that because of that situation, and knowing that he has to have ordinarily his access off his frontage on 28, then we have to come to you for a special permit to get his access alternatively off of the paved common drive easement. And it's his contention that this would provide superior access for the reasons I've mentioned. For vehicles and pedestrians, it would be much safer. It would be a great traffic hazard, in my opinion, to come out onto 28 there. It's an appropriate use for the area. It will not create a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. The others, the last lot, this easement area's already been in use for the other single-family residences. It's in, so therefore, it's in keeping with the surrounding residential parcels. And this alternative access would not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. It would not be detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood. I will say that I have a letter from one abutter, and I have four other, three other abutters in the back against the wall that are all in favor of this petition, along with Mrs. Longo, who couldn't stay any longer to leave an hour ago, and said, I wrote it down, and she says, "I want to express my support for John Canducci to have access for his property at 32 Deer Run instead of on Route 28."
Thank you.
I think it's fair to say that the other abutters would express the same sentiment. Now, if I may, as you know, a letter of objection has been submitted, and I just wanted to address some of those items. So I've already stated that in the petitioner's opinion, this would not create a nuisance, which is a pretty serious situation, nuisance or a serious hazard, risk of hazard. It's already in use. It's been in use for years for all of the other lots except for this one. He already has easement rights. It's stated in the letter that the Schumacher property is, has not been granted similar rights to pass over their property. It's simply incorrect that easement's been on record for twenty years. They do have rights to cross over their property. It's simply an incorrect statement. And she says that we need what's called the sixteen-by-sixteen-foot tunnel, and it's somewhat overgrown. We'll be happy to clear it. If they want us to widen it to sixteen by sixteen as opposed to leaving it the way it is, be happy to clear it if that's what you or they want us to do. She mentions you have to have legal frontage. In the petitioner's opinion, once the Board of Appeals granted him a variance, that made his frontage legal. He didn't have the hundred and fifty, had a hundred and fourteen. They said, "We vary the frontage requirement." That's the function of the Board of Appeals, is to vary the requirement to make the hundred and fourteen feet legal. So I disagree with her contention in the letter to that effect. Very interestingly, the next to last paragraph says that, "While it's unfortunate that the process for a curb cut is more complicated, given the need to petition the Commonwealth and not simply the Town of Harwich, it is what one would expect when convincing the development of a lot with frontage on a public way." The Schumachers don't access off of 28. They access off of this easement. Their house faces the easement. It does not face 28. When they bought their lot, shouldn't they have thought the same thing? No. They don't access off of 28. Why should the Canduccis have to do that? So it's simply a very unfortunate statement, as far as I'm concerned. Two last things. If you denied the special permit, and they were forced to have access off of 28, they still have legal easement rights over this common driveway anyway. They can use that driveway still, whether you allow this or not. They could still use that. Lastly, if you denied the special permit, the Canduccis, who have also, have already spent a lot of money on designing their house and positioning the house on the lot, would have to go back to the drawing board, turn the house around, reconfigure it, redesign it, at great expense to them. So thank you for listening. I'd ask that you grant the special permit this evening.
Thank you very much. Harry?
Just for the record, could we have the names and addresses of the other abutters that are in support?
Yes, you have the one, Patricia Longo. If you folks, you wanna just come up to the microphone and identify yourselves and give your address.
Hi, Kristen Pontorero, 30 Deer Run.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My husband, Basquale, is with me as well.
What's the last name?
Pontorero. P-O-N-T-O-R-I-E-R-O.
Jim Bowers, six C Pine Knoll. And I guess that's it. B-O-W-H-E-R-S.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Hogan, two C Pine Knoll.
If I may, thank you all for coming.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your patience this evening. I hope you enjoyed the show.
It's hard, I guess.
So.
So there's no part of counsel's statements that I disagree with. He's, this client does have access on a permanent easement that runs with his property, and if he's allowed access to and from it, I think the special permit is more a formality to formalize the fact that his frontage is going to now come from the varied hundred and fourteen feet rather than Route 28. And that's just really to formalize the legal frontage, in my own personal opinion, so.
Is that a motion?
It's not yet. I'm just commenting.
Any other comments from the board? Nope?
Sounds, that sounds reasonable to me.
Brian? Can we move to session now? Uh, yes. Well, we're in hearing, so.
Brian Solvman, I live at 14 Deer Run, and speaking behalf as a neighbor in the area, fully support the idea of granting this alternate access. The intersection at Uncle Vinnie's Depot and 28 is brutal. And one more, having a driveway there would really complicate things. I think it's the worst intersection in town. So I would fully support it. Now, speaking as the chair of the Board of Appeals, when this case came in front of us, we fully expected in granting, given our granting that night, that the access would be on Deer Run, and not going to 28. And we approved the site plan and so forth and positioning based upon using access on Deer Run. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Any further comments, questions?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I move that the planning board adopt the following findings and facts regarding case PB 2023-23 Canducci alternate access. The applicant is John W. Canducci. Locust, the locust is 32 Deer Run. Land owner is, again, John W. Canducci. Land owner's address is 9R Sunrise Ave in Plymouth, Mass. Applicant's representative is attorney William Kroll. Assessor's map is 35-Pi-2. Zoning district, this is in the residential medium-density RM and the commercial highway CH-1. The zoning districts, the request is for an alternate access special permit. The lot area is 20,473 square feet. The project description, the applicant is requesting an alternate access special permit. The lot in question has 114.9 linear feet of frontage on 28. It is a state highway. The applicant is asking for alternate access over a paved common drive easement on Deer Run. Applicable laws and regulations, the application for alternate access is in accordance with Section 325-18K and 325-51 of the Howard Zoning Bylaw, and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. The application documents consist of Form A, special permit application and narrative, proposed septic system site plan dated 7/16/2016, a locust map, land registration map dated 4/14/1992, planned land by William Zoino of Moran Engineering dated 10/15/1991, Barnes Civil Land Court registry of easement dated 5/18/2017, a butler request form, a municipal lien certificate, Howard Zoning Board of Appeals decision, case number 2022-30, stamped dated 1/4/2023, and the appropriate filing fee. The public hearing was duly noticed and held on July 25, 2023. And further, the planning board finds that the alternate access proposed is superior to the access along the frontage on Route 28, too, that the proposed alternate access is cleared to a minimum of sixteen feet in width and sixteen feet in height. And three, when access is proposed from an easement across another lot, the lot providing easement will have the required legal frontage for the zoning district, which I believe it does. So in further, we would further determine that the alternate access use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The specific site is an appropriate location for such an alternative use, structure or condition. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians with the alternate access. And adequate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use.
Is there a motion?
That's the motion.
And a second? We have a second? And a second? We have a second?
A second.
And? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I propose that the Planning Board grant administrative waivers of any and all applicable commercial and residential requirements of the bylaw, other than those required to construct the proposed single-family residence. That's your only waiver, correct?
A motion?
Wave everything.
No, I think it's sprinkle everything.
Right.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Tucker.
So I...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I move that the Planning Board adopt a special access, special permit for PB 2023-23 for a Canducci alternate access. That the special permit be recorded in the chain of title at the Barnesville County Registry of Deeds, that it be built in accordance with the plans submitted in the application, and that an appropriate as-built plan is on file prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
Motion.
Second.
We have a second. Mr. Chadwick, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening.
We move on this evening.
Please, round the beat.
Oh, thank you.
We're here. August, hey, come on back.
Now we move on to case number PB 2023-24, Labarge Engineering and Contracting Incorporated has applied for a site plan review and a special permit in order to build a 163-square-foot addition. Application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Chapter 325-55 and 325-51, and Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Property is located at 237 Route 28, Assessor's map 12, parcel N1-1, in the commercial highway CH-1 zoning district. Good evening, and again, thank you for your patience, sticking it out to the hour number three. The fun really starts. Thank you.
I'm Todd Labarge. This is Casey Furness. He's a project manager estimated with us. Hope to ignite for a site plan review. Hopefully, we can continue the professional atmosphere we just set. So essentially, we've owned this building for 20 years, and it's time to do a few modifications. I went through the town to talk to Shaili and just make sure the plan was feasible, and she, in going through it, they said we need to go through a site plan review, so therefore, here I am. So essentially, the project is just squaring off an area underneath the, some existing decks and squaring off the front of the building and doing interior modifications to the office space. And if you want, should I read the waivers that we were requesting?
No, I think they're on file.
Yeah.
But I would like a clearer narrative about the location, the structure, if that's okay, because I'm trying to make it out on the map here. It looks like it's at the, on the south side of 28 across from Lothrup?
Yeah, we're on the corner of Earl and...
Earl and, okay, yeah.
Yeah. And it's just squaring off some existing space, so there won't be any, as I think, 163 additional square feet in order to make some more efficient use of the office space. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you. And I wanted to see what the, you know, the space, just for the sake of clarity for everybody here, in the provided documents you have for the Exhibit 1, or I shouldn't, the existing elevations, proposed floor plans, maybe you could just walk us through very quickly what the alterations are that you can highlight on...
So, okay. So, yeah, we, I procrastinated a little bit on this. I went through the building commissioner, I think, six or seven years ago to do this, and we were ready to go, and Peter McDonald had drawn the original plan. In the meantime, we used his existing conditions and worked with LDA architects to just do some interior renovations. And essentially, he did a sketch for us, which I can give you. So the existing building, this is the proposed condition.
So that's comparable to this elevation A2?
And that was an existing?
That's an existing?
So what we're doing is, this area is the area that's squared off that you can see on the existing floor plan, case...
Got it.
Yeah, so if you're looking at A2, you're looking at the proposed.
Okay.
So that's going to be, that's with the building squared off there on the front. You want to look at existing, you want to look at EX2.
EX2, yep, okay.
So that's the existing. So you can kind of see, it's hard to see, but it's just that, that face of the office. It's just set back in underneath that roof line and that depth.
So you're kind of basically tying off one setback? Is that the deal? It's kind of like a recess portion's coming squared off?
Yeah, so this is what it looks like today. And then all we're doing here is...
So it's a covered patio that's becoming interior space.
Right, right. And that, because of Casey, that's why our application is so organized.
Yes, I wanted to say that. Excellent work.
So, yeah, so, and then there's the awning, current awning now, just a steel and fabric awning. We're just going to try to make that match some of the other work that has been done in the past. And that will be, you know, vestibule, there's a windbreak just coming into the, into the office.
Okay, great. We lost a member, so...
Yeah, just off.
Do we have to, can we just pause it for a second? Appreciate your patience. It's one of those nights.
Did you learn a lot tonight?
Yeah.
What's that?
Did you learn a lot tonight?
Oh, yeah, this was my first rodeo here, so. Is this how they all go?
No.
Many of them, but none.
We never have, you know, speaking of rodeos, we don't have bucking Broncos in the audience, but we did tonight. Okay, so, did you catch the...
The awnings.
No, the awnings. It's basically an enclosed patio, basically, is what we're looking at.
So it's a covered patio now that it is going to be being closed. It's going to be, it's going to turn into interior space instead of exterior space.
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you.
The only question I had for you is Chris Nickerson got back to us about a sump pump that dumps onto Earl Road. They were looking, Public Works is looking to have the stormwater handled on your property as opposed to going out into Earl Road.
Okay.
Is that something that can be accommodated in the park lot?
Yeah, yeah, we can put a dry well. There's a high water table in that basement there, so it's...
Yeah, his, just so that, I don't know if you've seen his comment. That was his comment to us.
I haven't seen it, but I understand.
Let's read it into the...
So, we'll carry it into the record. So, dated July 10th, to Sheila, our assistant, and copy to Lynn Cooper, it says, "Good afternoon. A reference to the above-mentioned planning requests listed above, namely your application. They currently have a sump pump that discharges into Earl Road and the right-of-way and adds to the capacities of the municipal stormwater at the intersection of Route 28. The DPW would like to see this sump pump and its discharge be handled on-site and not allowed to flow into the right-of-way. Thanks, Chris Nickerson, road manager."
Sure.
So if that's something you can...
Yeah, we can accommodate a dry well.
You can deal with that. That'd be great.
Check your junk email, because I did send it.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions?
I have nothing else.
Any other questions, gentlemen? I have no questions either. Perhaps we can proceed with motion findings?
We have to close the public hearing.
Oh, yes, excuse me. Let's close the public hearing, shall we?
Yes.
Make a motion when we close the public hearing.
Motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I move that we adopt the following findings of fact regarding case PB 2023-24, Labarge Site Plan Special Permit. Applicant is Todd Labarge. Locus is 237 Route 28. Landowner is Todd Labarge and Lori Labarge. Landowner address is 237 Route 28 West Howard. Assessor's map 12-N1-1, zoning district, commercial highway CH-1. The development type is infill. Lot area is 16,715 square feet. Project description, the applicant is requesting a site plan review special permit in order to construct 163-square-foot addition to enhance the existing office space. Applicable laws, the application for site plan review special permit is in accordance with Section 325-55 and 325-51 of the Howard zoning bylaw and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. The application documents are Form A, special permit, application and narrative, sewage disposal, system profile dated 5/23/91, building plans, elevations, existing and proposed, pages EX1, EX2, A1, A2, and A3, municipal waters request form, and the appropriate filing fee. Hearing date was duly noticed and held on July 25, 2023. Further, we find that... That the use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, that the specific site is an appropriate location for the use and structure, addition or condition. Three, that there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians with this, the granting of the site plan, and adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. I think that's it for conditions for findings.
We have a motion?
Do we have to do the waivers or not?
We'll do the waivers separate.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that's, I propose that the Planning Board grant the following waivers. That the applicant be granted a waiver from providing drainage calculations in the drainage map as the additional office space will reside under an existing roof line and will have no impact to the existing site drainage. Two, that we grant a waiver from the providing an additional parking calculation requirement. The additional office space is a total of 163 square feet and does not meet the 200-square-foot office space criteria to add an additional parking space. There are currently 17 parking spaces on the lot at 237 Route 28. That we grant a waiver of the landscape plan requirement. There will be no changes, the applicant's proposing no changes to the landscape on the property, and the existing landscape features will remain in place. And four, that we grant a waiver from the traffic details requirement. There will be no change to the impact of the existing traffic and roadways with the addition proposed under the site plan.
Motion and a second, please.
A second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I move that the Planning Board adopt site plan review special permit for application PB 2023-24.
Yep.
Subject to the following conditions. One, that reasonable measures are implemented to provide for screening of parking areas or other parts of the premises from the street by walls, fences, plantings, or other devices. Much, that... That the surface water from the parking areas and driveways will be disposed of through a proper drainage system on the property itself. That the sump pump will no longer drain into Earl Road. It will be mitigated on the property locus. That the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian traffic are enhanced by the... So I guess my last condition would be that the special permit be recorded at the Barnesville County Registry of Deeds, and that a final as-built be filed with the Building Department before an occupancy permit is issued.
And a second, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying.
Appreciate your patience, gentlemen.
You have the keys off for the way out.
So we have one last item of Planning Board business this evening, which is to approve the minutes from July 11. Any comments? We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, people.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I just mentioned to you, how many people were happy with the Dropbox? Did anybody see the Dropbox?
I saw it, yep.
Yes.